Good evening, welcome to our February 2nd, 2023 Baldwin County Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. At this time, if you will, if you'll stand, we'll have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Father, we're thankful to you for this day, for the blessings we've each received. We thank you now, Father, for the opportunity to serve in the capacity that we're in tonight. We pray your blessings, insight, and wisdom on the decisions that are made here tonight. And, Father, we thank you for this great county we lived in. We know that it's one of those precious things that we have. And, Father, I just pray that we recognize that. We all work to make it a better place. And, Father, we realize that there are just, when it comes to growth, it's difficult. Father, we just have to do the best that we can with what we have. And so, Father, we thank you for our staff that put this together tonight. We thank you for all that they do. We pray all this now in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'll do a roll call. Brandon Bias.
Here.
Robert Davis.
Here.
Plumber Tunsamire.
Here.
Jason Padgett.
Michael Mullik.
Here.
Greg Seibert.
Here.
Bill Boyer.
Here.
Jamie Stradiger.
Here.
Mike McKenzie.
Rebecca Thiel.
Diane Burnett.
Here.
Michael Fletcher.
Here.
All right, we have a call. This time, you have a, you've all been sent a copy of the minutes of the last work session and our last meeting on January 5th. If you don't have, unless you have corrections, but if you don't, I would entertain a motion that we approve both of those.
So moved.
I have a motion by Greg Seibert to approve the minutes, work session minutes and regular minutes. Do I have a second? Second. Brandon Bias, second motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. All right, at this time, if you folks will just bear with us for a moment, we got a little bit of House responsibilities here. Matthew, will you help us out with the elections that we need to take care of?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commissioners. At this time, we do have to hold our annual election of the Chair and Vice Chair. There's no prohibition on the previous Chair or Vice Chair holding that role again. So, at this time, we'll just open the floor for nominations for someone to serve in the position of Chair.
Mr. Chairman, Matthew, I'll make a motion that we nominate Steve to serve as Chair of the Planning Commission.
Second.
All right, do we have any other nominations?
As soon as the nominations close.
Okay, nominations are closed. All in favor of Mr. Stephen Pumphrey serving as Chair, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mr. Pumphrey. Thank you for your service. You've done a great job and have been a big help to even us as staff, which has been, which is a huge blessing from the staff side. We'll, this time, we'll open up nominations from the floor for Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Brandon Bias to serve as Vice Chair.
All right, do we have any other nominations? All right, we'll go ahead and close the nominations. All in favor of electing Brandon Bias as Vice Chair, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Mr. Bias. We appreciate your service. All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, let me do a couple announcements and then we'll, we have a couple of items we'll need to address, basically affecting the agenda. But let me just begin. Hopefully, if you have an interest in speaking on any item tonight, you stopped at the front desk, you filled out a form, or you signed up, and it'll be done on a tablet and given to me. And then, as we go through the public hearings tonight, our staff will make a presentation. We'll have opportunity to talk with our staff. Then, at the appropriate time, I will have all those that have signed up, and I will call you by name. I am going to ask something right from the beginning. I know that we have about three groups here, I believe, if I'm guessing right. Two of those are going to probably be affected in what we're about to do, but one of those is Lillian Group. If you're here with the Lillian Group, and if it's as large as I think it is, we would ask that you get some spokespeople, and not to have maybe three to five people at the most to speak. We have found that it becomes very repetitious. And so, if you'll get some spokespeople, you'll have time to do that so that we don't, we'll be here all night if we let everybody in here speak and going as long as we usually do. So, be sure and do that. If you have cell phones, you're in the meeting tonight, please turn those off. I will come to, as we go through each item, I will close the public hearing at a point on each item, and when I do, the public hearing is closed. You can't raise your hand and ask me to speak again. It's closed. We will make a decision at that point of what to do with the item. So, hopefully that clears that up as we go through the meeting tonight. All right, so, Matthew, I know that we have had a couple requests for withdrawal, so if you'll address those for us and explain those.
Yes, sir. Our first item was case Z22-25 Retirement Systems of Alabama Property. The authorized agent for the applicant in this case did send us an email requesting that this case be withdrawn. For the sake of those who are here today, when a case is withdrawn, that case is closed, the file becomes, the file gets closed. And if they were to pursue anything further, they would have to submit a new application at that point. At this time, I would like to invite the authorized agent, Ms. Curry, up to kind of just verbalize that into the record, their request to withdraw. And then, we would propose a staff that the Planning Commission go ahead and vote to accept or deny that request to withdraw now. So that way, if it is withdrawn, folks don't have to stay here through the entire meeting. One thing to note on this, an applicant has an automatic right to withdraw seven days prior to a meeting. In this case, that did not come more than the seven days. But even if tonight y'all were to recommend denial, the applicant could turn and withdraw it tomorrow before it goes to the County Commission meeting. So, there might be some folks who say, well, is there any advantage to us denying that request to withdraw? It really wouldn't have any impact, other than procedurally, we are required to accept that from the floor at tonight's meeting. So, Ms. Curry, if you want to come and verbalize y'all's request into the record.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion.
Okay.
Hang on just a second. Mr. King, you'll turn it on for us.
Hello, there we go.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, and the Planning Commission and Commissioner, Chairman Pumphrey, on behalf of the applicant, I'm Melissa Curry with GMC Engineering, and we do formally withdraw this application.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I do know a number, there's a large group from the public here, and I do want to make sure we recognize them because of the fact that that's what this process is about. That's the purpose of the public hearing. So, if you're here tonight in relation to this case, thank you for being aware. And would you just indicate that by raising your hand here tonight? And on behalf of the Planning Commission, County Commissioners, thank you for participating in this process. And the public will be notified if this, depending on this vote, what happens moving forward.
Okay. All right, so you've heard the request to withdraw the application. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the motion to withdraw case Z22-25.
Okay, Mr. Mullik's made a motion that we approve the request to withdraw. Do you have a second?
Second.
Diane, I'm looking at Diane, which I heard about three, but Diane Burnett, second the motion. Any question or comments on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion is approved.
All right, Mr. Chairman, we also had a request from an applicant for case PUD22-15 Grand River RV Park. That's a subdivision case. They were the case that came before you last month, and they had not yet received the utility letter from Baldwin County Sewer Service. They still do not have that letter, and they asked that this case just be withdrawn until they can kind of sort all this out. I don't know if Mr. Leebe is here today or this evening, but if not, staff recommends that we go ahead and accept this withdrawal.
Okay. All right, is there, do we need to have the applicant come up on this, Matthew, or?
I don't know that Mr. Leebe was the representative of the applicant. I don't see him here, so.
Okay.
He was here, but I don't, I don't know that, he did submit it in writing.
But we did have a written request.
We do have a written request.
All right, we have a written request then on this one, so I'll entertain a motion on this request.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we honor the applicant's request for withdrawal.
All right, Brandon Bias made the motion to approve the request. Plumber, Mr. Tunsamire, second that motion. Any questions on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to ask those who are here, if you were here for the RSA case, you're certainly welcome to head out if you'd like. I do know we have a number of folks here for other cases, and we want to make sure those seats are available for those who are here for our next upcoming cases.
Okay. All right, we will go back to our agenda now, to talk of the agenda, and open the public hearing for our first item, case number Z22-17. This is the Swift Land and Timber LLC property. Does anyone on the Planning Commission need to declare any prior communication on this item? Ms. Mitchell.
So, I'm going to present the case for the rezoning first, followed by the PRD.
Mr. Chairman, I need to interrupt for just a second for legal counsel here.
Yeah, I'll be recusing, and Stone Crossway will be recusing from advising the Commission on this particular matter only tonight.
Okay.
Okay, so this will be a little unusual. I'm going to present the rezoning case, and then the PRD case. We're going to vote on the PRD case first, and then the rezoning case, if that makes sense, because you need to know the rezoning to kind of set the background. So, so the rezoning case, I'll begin with that. It's located in Plan District 22 in the Lillian area, 29.26 acres, and they're requesting to rezone it from B4 to RSF2. So, B4 is major commercial, and they want to change it to RSF2 because they want to put an 80-lot planned residential development on it. And you cannot put a PRD in something that's zoned B4. It has to be a residential zoning. So, that's why they need to do the rezoning first, and then do the PRD. And a PRD overlay, basically, you're taking a modified plan, you're adjusting some of the requirements to allow some more flexibility and creativity. So, this slide shows that the B4 is the existing zoning. They want to rezone to RSF2, and then put the PRD over it. Now, the advantage of this, normally, when people ask for rezoning, you don't really know what will be there. It can be anything that fits that zoning. So, the beauty of the PRD, they have a very specific plan that they would have to abide by. So, in this case, it'll look like this, and I will address that in the next case. So, this just shows the adjacent zoning. As you can see, most of the use around it is agricultural, residential, although there is some business in the southwest. And this shows you what is in the area. There is an RV park, an existing RV park across 91. I forgot to say, this is the corner of 91 and 98. And then, there is a subdivision, fairly new, and across 98. So, these are the requirements for B4, and this shows what is already permitted in B4. These are the things the applicant could do right now, subject to approval of application. These are what's allowed. So, large box stores, hotels, RV parks. And then, these are the requirements for RSF2, and I'm going to come back to these in a minute when we talk about the PRD requirements. So, when rezoning, we consider these different factors. There are 11 factors, some to go through, some of the highlights of those to talk about why they want to rezone. So, the first, is it compatible with the existing pattern of zoning? And right now, RSF2 is actually more compatible. Again, if you look at what's around it, B4 is major commercial, and as you can see right now, there are some commercial business in the area, but it's much more geared to agriculture and residential use. So, for that reason, we feel like rezoning is more appropriate. Other, kind of the history of rezonings in that area, it's kind of interesting. This area, in 2005, that's when a lot of these rezonings occurred, and originally, the applicant who owned it back then in '05 wanted this to be M1 light industrial, and the Planning Commission changed that to B4. So, they're kind of stepping it down a little. But then, you also have high-density residential across the street in '05. So, at that time, they were kind of visioning this as being a zone for development, you know, like high-density development. And so, in this case, we're kind of taking it back, de-escalating the development by changing it from B4 to RSF2. Conforming with the master plan, this is the master plan that's adopted in 2013, and as you can see, this is a combination of what is there, plus kind of the future, what was envisioned. And you can see that there was industrial envisioned then. This has not come to pass. So, according to the master plan, it should stay B4. But because the kind of development in this area didn't occur the expected, then again, it would, it would make sense to kind of de-escalate that. As far as traffic, this is a major intersection. They have submitted a traffic plan, and we'll discuss that more in the PRD application. Factor six, is it consistent with development patterns in the area? Again, this area is more residential-agricultural, so RSF2 does seem to be more conforming than the B4. And it also creates more of a transition. If I go, I have a map, that's where I skipped it. But if you were to see a map of the zoning of the entire area, there's more of a transition. Here we go. This is what I was looking for. So, the transitions, you can see over in the Lillian area, there's already a lot of residential, and then, and then the area around it's RA, and so RSF2 would just fit with what's already currently in that area. Let's skip ahead. So, zoning, and you, these are all in your staff reports, so you've been able to read through these factors. Health, safety, and welfare, there are no anticipated adverse effects. And so, this just shows, again, that the de-intensification from major commercial to single families, so staff recommends approval. And like I said, we won't vote on that yet. I'm going to do the PRD first, and then we'll come back to this.
Mr. Chairman, logistically, did you open the public hearing for both of these cases or just the first one?
Just the first one.
So, our recommendation as staff is that we go ahead and open both public hearings simultaneously. And now, Sean will go ahead and present the second case, and then we can hold, you know, consider all, everybody's thoughts on both of these at the same time.
Okay. So, we'll also open the public hearing now for this case PRD22-3. Let me just ask to be clear for the record. Anybody need to declare any prior communication on this item? Okay, Ms. Mitchell.
Okay, so the first few slides are kind of a repeat of what's, what we've already presented. So, let me skip ahead. So, this is the RSF2 requirements, and I'll talk about this more in a moment. The PRD requirements, the point of a PRD is it allows flexibility and creative, creativity, so you can kind of tweak the requirements if you're trying to create a different kind of application. So, and in this case, it has to be under unified ownership initially for PRD, and they will request a subdivision. So, that's another, a whole nother application that we'll address in the future, the subdivision. So, again, they're requesting RSF2, single-family housing, and it does meet the requirements for PRD. It only has to be five acres. This is 29. So, I want to kind of give you a history of what's been proposed for this site before, because a lot of people in the community are concerned about this. This is the original application back in July. It was for a 93-lot subdivision. As you can see, there's not a lot of open space. That one was withdrawn. This is a 206-lot RV park that was submitted in June of 2022. And so, this one is still in the queue. So, this is something that would be allowable in the current zoning if it is not rezoned. So, just seeing, see, these are the two plans that we've had before. So, this is the current plan, and I'm going to get through how the PRD request varies from the RSF2 requirements. So, on the left side, you can see, these are what you normally have to have, 15,000 square foot lots. They're asking for 6,280-foot lot width, they're asking for 52. And then, when you look at the yards, you can see that those have all been reduced. But if you notice, the overall density is actually less than is allowed. It's 2.7 units an acre versus 2.9. So, how do they do that? Well, what they have done is implement or add in more green space than what's required. So, for open space, normally, PRD requires that 20% of the gross area be open. So, just based, you know, raw calculations, that's about 5.8 acres. But they have actually provided 7.7. Now, you have to take out wetlands, drainage, things like that, to come up what we call usable open space. So, the required usable open space has to be 50% of this number, which is 2.9 acres, and they've actually provided 3.4 acres. So, they've actually provided more open space and more usable open space than required. And so, on here, I've kind of color-coded it. Yellow is just the general open space, and then the green, those are the areas that would be considered usable for active or passive recreation. And then, to zoom in a little bit here, this is in that central common area. They're proposing walking trails, and we do, as a condition of approval, ask that they be five-inch sidewalks. And then, you'll notice there's a note that says that the ones, the houses that are around this open space, they're limited to a four-foot-high fence in the rear, just again, to kind of maintain that open area. The landscape plan, this was the original one, and there were some gaps. They're proposing, the lighter green was the new vegetation, and the darker green was existing, and we found that there are actually some gaps. And so, we required a new one, and due to miscommunication on my part, it was submitted, but in a, I didn't see it, and so I didn't have time to recolor it. So, I will put that in the public folder tomorrow. But one, the main thing they've done, because there's already a gap here on this eastern edge between the existing woods and the property, what they've done is proposed to move the landscape buffer here and preserve some of these trees, and then supplement, it has to be, I believe it's 20 feet, 20 feet wide. So, they might have to supplement a little bit. But now, the new, the revised one will have the trees to the west of the detention ponds. This is to address the drainage, just to show, because I know a lot of people in this area are very concerned about drainage issues. This shows the reduction in flow rates, and that's measured in cubic feet per second. And the green, that is the western portion, the blue is the northeastern portion, and the yellow would go to the south. And so, this shows you the numbers for the different flood events, and you can see that they all are reduced. And I'm going to allow the engineers to address the details of that in another, afterwards. And then, another thing to address, the local drainage issues, the highway department has actually put in some improvements recently, and this is to the east at County Road 93. They've installed some new drainage easements and ditches and some cross drains. Utility letters are all up to date. No wetlands were identified. Traffic study has been submitted, but the PRD doesn't really address that yet, but the subdivision application will. And so, we will go through that. The highway department has not signed off on this yet, but just to let you know that one has been done, we have it, and it will be analyzed, assessed at the subdivision stage. So, at this point, we're recommending approval, and we have a few conditions. The rezoning has to be approved first. If the rezoning is denied, then they will most likely withdraw this. Walking trails, we're asking those be concrete. And then, the new sidewalk plan, that was, or new landscape plan, that was based on us not having seen it. I would still like to evaluate it before we accept it with that. So, I'd still like to keep it as a condition of approval to give us more time to assess it, and make sure the revised one does fit the requirements. But regardless, it will have to fit the Article 17 and the zoning ordinance. So, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. All right, first off, are there any questions by the Planning Commission members for staff? All right, no questions for staff?
I have one question. On the traffic study, it looks like some work was done, and we are in our packets, you know, it talks about some additional lanes.
Yes, I took an excerpt from it and put that on there, because that's what we normally do, we look through the suggestions. But I guess they are still in negotiations with ALDOT and with the highway department. So, this, I guess, is like a preliminary, and then there's some negotiation, goes back and forth. So, that's why I removed it for the presentation.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. Thank you. All right, is there a representative for the applicant here that would like to speak? Mr. Deal?
Good evening. David Deal with SC Civil. I think Sean covered it very well. We're asking for RSF2 zoning, and we're going to utilize that allowable zoning, but we're wanting to cluster the development, smaller lots. You'll notice on the plan, most of the lots back up to an open space common area, and the middle common area will be improved with sidewalks around the. Um, and, uh, the middle common area will be improved with, uh, sidewalks around the perimeter and the interior part will be a place where kids can play and stuff like that. But it's just basically taking that density and clustering it in. Um, if you have any questions about any of the technical stuff, the engineers are here to answer those.
Okay. Anybody in the planning commission have any questions for Mr. Deal? Or their engineer? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. As I said earlier, we know there are many of you here tonight. Let me just say upfront, uh, many of your comments were, uh, sent in early and all those were emailed, copied and emailed to us. In addition to those, uh, more were handed to us tonight. We have those, they're, they'll be on record. Uh, and so I, I'm going to guess overall, and I don't have an exact number, but there's a couple of hundred at least, maybe more. But, uh, so as I asked earlier, it would be helpful. We know that all of these are requesting that it be denied. So just know that we understand there's a large majority here tonight, all in opposition. But, uh, we certainly want to hear, and instead of letting everybody speak and saying the same thing, we certainly want to have some of you speak. So are there those that kind of represent, either if you're in a subdivision, you can represent the group in your subdivision or the area that could speak? Uh, I would allow three to five of you to speak, but just know that once we hear traffic about two or three times, we, we understand it's a traffic issue that you're concerned about, or if it's drainage or whatever. But, um, so is there someone that would like to come up and speak? Dick?
And maybe, Mr. Chairman, we could also start just by getting a raise of hands, uh, of folks collectively in here about their position, so that way they know we recognize, uh, that they're, what they're here for and what their position is.
Yeah. So let's just start from the beginning. Uh, just so we want to know how many, we can all see, how many of you are actually here in opposition to the request?
And, uh...
Show of hands are good. Thank you. All right. If you'll give us your name and address.
Can you ask how many are for this development?
Yeah, well, I will. Is there anybody here?
Of the community other than that?
Other than the applicant, obviously in his representation, is there anybody here that's, and if you are and you want to speak, I'll certainly let you do that. Are you here in favor of? Okay. Give us your name and address, please.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. I am David Williams. My address is three-two-two-four-six Bartel Street. My property is to the north, adjacent to this property.
Okay.
First, I'd like to thank the commission for your volunteer service. It's greatly appreciated and I'd like to thank all those in the community who showed up here tonight, whom I believe have the same concerns I have. First of all, there's, in the staff report, I noticed a couple things that were incorrect, I believe. Uh, there's one of property...
Was it the northeast?
Northeast, south. Where it's showing east, that is to the south. If you'll go up one to the previous slide, that is the little green block marked RA. To the east is the property that is RA, totally up and down. Yes. Correct.
Yeah.
Okay? And then also, there was another slide. We were talking about zoning, about ten or fifteen down, somewhere in there.
Which?
Uh, it showed a overlay of the, it showed a overlay, had, uh, County Road ninety-eight and you said, uh, commercial industrial.
Oh, that's the master plan. That's not what's actually there. That's what was...
All right. That slide's wrong also.
I can't, I can't read this. I guess it's wrong.
It was about midway through the staff report.
Sorry, technical issues here. Uh...
It would be on the, uh, twenty-two dash seventeen, not the PRD.
Oh, okay. Yes, you're right. This one. Okay. You can keep talking while I'm opening it up. And I think the one you're referring to is the one that's the master plan, and that was like the projected, what they were assuming would be there. I think that was...
I was trying to keep up with you as best I could. There's prior to that...
Ah, here. I'll let Phee drive.
We're showing the subject property. That is not the location of the property. That's approximately four miles west. That's County Road ninety-five and County Road ninety-eight.
You're right. That's, that's my fault. You're right. No, I...
I ain't being nitpicky, but we're dealing with facts and we're dealing with what I consider a pretty important issue.
I take, I take full...
I, I'm not blaming nobody. I just, we're making an important decision here. Okay. I'd also like to make the commission aware of our amendments to the Planning Districts twenty-two, twenty-nine, thirty-two and thirty-three, which this is in Planning District twenty-two, that would prevent this type of subdivision in our planned district, which are pretty close to duplicate of Plan District thirty-seven, which were approved in July. We just paid Design Workshop to help with updating our vision for future growth in Baldwin County. Here are a few points they published in our vision, Citizens' Guide to Growth in Baldwin County. On page twenty, the number-one area of concern by eighty-three-point-seven percent of citizens was loss of rural lifestyle, unplanned and unregulated growth, which these types of developments do impact the rural character of this community. On page twenty-two, ninety-two percent of the citizens agree that tools are needed to protect rural areas of the community, which this is considered a rural area. Ninety-one percent of the citizens agree there needs to be growth limitations and standards of development in rural areas. On page thirty-eight, number-one area concern is traffic congestion. We know the traffic on Highway ninety-eight is rough. Just in November and December, in this stretch of Highway ninety-eight, where this proposed development is, we had six accidents with two traffic fatalities, losing one of our postal servicemen. All right? We have issues there. On page eighty-three, it describes density. It describes medium density would be one-point-five to two-point-five houses per acre. Traditional would be point-five to one-point-five houses per acre. And rural would be point-five houses per acre. If you go on to page one-eleven of the report, it identifies this end section as a rural crossroad center. It identifies this area as a moderate development, which is a rural of point-five houses per acre. Proposed application does not meet any of these visions. So the moderate development, which is rural of point-five houses per acre, proposed application does not meet any of these visions. In fact, it exceeds what is identified as medium density. So now we're above medium density. On page eighty-four, it states, "Where should county growth go?" And I quote, "Based on community input and keeping with a smarter management, growth should mostly occur within the municipalities." So number one's within the municipalities, number two's within jurisdictional planning areas that have zoning infrastructure and community services, and number three's are areas that have adequate roads, community services, and that are not prone to flooding." And I know y'all have heard about flooding. On page one-hundred, it identifies Highway ninety-eight as a road of semi-character, which is seventy-eight-point-seven percent of citizens thought, concerns that thought that was important to maintain. When you drive from the Lillian, Alabama Bridge to the Foley Beach Expressway, that's eleven-point-eight miles. In that area, you will see two subdivisions, Fields Crossing, which was zoned RMF six in two thousand and five. The next one you'll see was east of Alberta, which is Sandy Creek subdivision. All right? A minimum one-acre tract with a very beautiful entrance to it. In my research, I have spent many hours on our GIS map, looking at all the parcels, particularly in Planning District twenty-two, where this is going, and the adjoining parcels, uh, twenty-nine, thirty-two and thirty-three. As small as these proposed parcels are, I was unable to find one that was as small in those planning districts. For this development, it's hard to find parcels smaller than one acre in those planning districts. And when you do, usually what you'll find is you'll have three or four small ones altogether, all owned by the same family. Oh, my gosh. Thank you, sir. So you usually find multiple small, but not this small, parcels of land that are owned by the same family. The parcels proposed in this development, only sixteen of eighty of them meet RSF four guidelines. The other sixty-four don't even meet that, sixty-two hundred square foot lots. Again, these would be the smallest in the planning district. This is not compatible and of note, this commission recommended denial of an RS four application with lots that small on this exact same piece of property. It recommends six-foot setbacks. If I took Matthew Brown out there and laid him on the ground and put his feet against the house, his head would be across the property line. You know, he's a tall man. Not that tall, though. So if it didn't fit then, how does it fit now? Our infrastructure is not set up for this growth. Our water and sewage system already has issues and to my knowledge, has not changed anything to support this growth and prevent further damage to our land and our wetlands. Recently, December, right before Christmas, during our four-day cold snap, the majority of the residents in this area, this proposed development, went without power and water because the system could not handle the demand. So once again, if we don't improve our systems first, we're going to continue to affect more and more people if we build these developments and bring, bring them in. There is no reliable high-speed internet in this area. CenturyLink is the provider, which I wouldn't worse that on my worst enemy. Verizon and T-Mobile have stopped offering the home internet packages because they're overloaded. All right? And if you read Brightspeed's letter on here, they're not providing internet service. Their statement is, "We'll look into it." So once again, you're setting up somebody without adequate communications. We still have a flooding problem to the east of this development and on the south side of Highway ninety-eight when we get our major rains. Our emergency services have not been increased to support these new developments, which puts all of us and our property at peril. Our fire department is an all-volunteer fire department that has, that answers over one-thousand calls per year, which is the highest for any volunteer fire department in Baldwin County. We would have to move to a paid volunteer system to get the protection and services we expect and future residents will expect. With the addition of this subdivision, how will this affect our emergency service response times for our area? How will this affect our ISO rating? If this does affect our ISRO rating, it affects every single member of the community and the, and the insurance they will have to pay, insurance increases they will have to pay due to change in ISO rating. Alberta High School was set up due to overcrowding at Foley High School. As of today, the school is already overcrowded with about thirty-three students per class, three-hundred-and-ninety-one students currently enrolled. The student-to-teacher ratio is nineteen to one, which is higher than the state of Alabama average of seventeen to one. If we add eighty more students to that, that increases the growth by twenty-five percent to an already crowded situation. The student-to-teacher ratio would be twenty-two to one. Again, this is just another example of how our infrastructure is not set up to support this. So the real question is, how does this development improve our community? It doesn't. It only takes away from what the more, majority of us live here for, which for the most of us, we've made our largest financial investment into our home and our land. And we invested that money right here in this community to enjoy a peaceful rural way of life. We understand growth must take place and growth is taking place at the end of County Road ninety-three, uh, correction, at the end of Bartel Street and County Road ninety-three, there's a subdivision going in there, three acres and nine-acre lots. At County Road ninety-three and Sunset, there's houses being developed there and those, that's about three to five acres. If you go down County, North County Road ninety-one, uh, in between Sunset and Faircloth, houses are being built there on five to ten-acre tracts. All of this development is compatible with our area and I don't think you would hear any objection. Mr. Chairman, you heard me speak on behalf of the subdivision at the end of Bartel Street because that is compatible with our area. What is proposed by this applicant is not. This request to rezone this parcel to RSF two does not support maintaining the rural life in this area. It totally changes the landscape to a higher-density housing. This rezoning is the opposite of what Design Workshop was paid to do, which was hired by the county so we could make calculated changes in a logical manner of the future vision of Baldwin County. The process on this piece of property has been going on for almost a year, ten, ten months roughly. During this time, we've had multiple public hearings. Mr. Chairman, I've heard all the opposition. I've read all the opposition emails. I've held town halls. I've spoke to hundreds, if not thousands, of people. I have yet to speak to one member of this community that was in support of this. Have you heard of anybody in support of this from our community, sir? No. Thank you. So tonight, on behalf of the citizens, I respectfully request the commission to vote for denial and I request that the staff change their recommend, recommendation to denial. Thank you for your time and your patience.
All right. To be fair, did he adequately address your concerns? If so, is there anybody that feels like you need to speak in addition to what he said? If it's something different, I will allow you to come and speak.
He hasn't spoken on.
Okay. Then you're welcome to come up and speak. Give us your name and address.
Okay. That's weird. Okay. Hi, my name is Stephanie Bartle. I live on the other end of Bartel Street at three-two-eight-one-three Bartel Street. The one, the thing I wanted to talk on the most was, I know we talked about the water, but I want to talk about how it has affected our farm property. For instance, my husband has been farming the property just south of that, east of Fields Crossing, for twenty-five years. And in those twenty-five years, we have never, ever had a problem with runoff and now we have major trenches going through there. And so although Aldott had come in and done some work, um, I don't think that it's going to be enough to what the community east of this proposed subdivision would need. Ms. Whitehurst, who lives just east of this, if she, if they decide to build this and there's all this concrete going in, her house will then be flooded. All I wanted to say was that even though Aldott had come in and did make some adjustments, I don't think it is enough and I don't think putting this subdivision in is going to, the, the changes that were made with Aldott, I don't think that it's going to help in any kind of way. If anything, it's going to make it worse. Also, some of the things that they had pointed out that Aldott had done, there was a piece that was on ninety-three. It is still wet. By the way, there's still flooding. And then I also wanted to point out that in this area around, and I pointed this out before, around, and at ten mile, or five-mile radius, it's not even going to have to go ten miles, the, the majority of the property there is agriculture, specifically my family. And they've been there for five generations. And I don't see a subdivision like this fitting in with our area there. Hey, you can see, we're north of that and then the Casa Bons are south. I just, and most of the farmers who have tried to farm that property can't even farm it because it is so wet. And so I don't think that putting in a subdivision on top of that is going to be beneficial in any kind of way, no matter how many water retention ponds they have. Um, so I just encourage you to vote in opposition, um, for this recommended zoning.
Okay. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, thank you for your service.
Give us your name and address, please.
Certainly. I'm John Havener and I've lived on, uh, at one-two-zero-two-two County Road ninety-one for almost fifty years. I'd like to appeal on behalf of the citizens of Lillian for you to help us and save us from a corporation that just devours things. DR Horton has got three projects completed in Lillian, one near Spanish Cove, uh, and two right at the, right across from this property. And, um, I, as you, as you think about what we're facing here, it's two corporations, Swift and DR... And as you think about what we're facing here, it's two corporations, Swift and D.R. Horton, wanting to develop and aggressively develop this portion in opposition to thousands of people in Lillian. I believe if we had a plebiscite on this project, and any project like it but this one, it would be overwhelmingly rejected by the people that live in these zoning areas. And so I'd just like to appeal to you to help us in Lillian. D.R. Horton's had a nice run in Lillian, and we don't want any adjustments to their project to be approved. We want them to be done. So thank you very much. And I'll conclude with the idea that there are thousands of acres for sale in South Baldwin County with good roads, even on the Baldwin Beach Express, within minutes of our communities that D.R. Horton could develop. I look to our west and cross the Silver Hill city limits and go into Fairhope, and D.R. Horton has stripped the hills of vegetation.
Can we get back to this site? And so I need to kind of keep it focused to this part.
Okay. Okay. It's a devouring monster, and we've got it going in Lillian. We'd like it stopped. Thank you very much.
Give us your name and address, please, sir.
I'm Henry Casa Bomb, and my address is three-one-nine-nine-four Pitts Lane. And I've got a farm, but maybe not even a quarter of a mile from where they're going to develop that property. And I farmed that piece of property where they're going to develop, and that is wet land. We couldn't even farm it. And that's the reason why it's grown up in weeds. Nobody could farm it. It's too wet. And my family's been living there a hundred and one years. Now, if their runoff runs into my field, which it will, we're downhill from it. They're going to drown us out. Now, who is responsible for this? The developers or who do we look at?
Well, to answer your question, the county engineers, and I know this is hard for everybody to understand, the county engineers are going to review this before. We're not even at that stage, but they'll have to design everything to meet county standards. And once it's built, it has to be built to those standards.
But if it's already built, then how we stop it from the water coming in our field?
You would go to the county, and they would help to deal with it. If it's a malfunction in whatever they built, then they would address that with the developer.
We've already made such deep ditches to drain this extra water that comes in there, but now they're going to drain more yet to us.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, thanks, sir. All right. Something different? Again, that was a discussion about drainage, and we know about drainage. So if you've got something we haven't heard, I will close the public hearing if I hear another repeat. Not to be ugly, it's just that I know everybody wants to speak, but you spoke clearly, believe me, and we heard you. We heard you. But go ahead. Give us your name and address.
Genie Rayvan, one-oh-eight-six-oh, County Road ninety-nine, Lillian. They said that they had permits that were okayed for this property from all-power sewer-water, but the only permits, or not permits, but the only okay letters that they have are from way back in October. They're not for an eighty subdivision, this eighty subdivision thing. I mean, have they gotten new ones since they divided?
These are all from January this year. And yes, because the original ones, you're right, were from...
I was here a month ago when they divided this from the...
Right. We had letters for the two-lot subdivision, and so they replaced them all with a new plot. So these letters all relate to the...
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, that all those were in there. And the other thing was the fact of ninety-one and ninety-eight and the accidents and deaths that have happened out there. Just wanted to say that's pretty bad because I have to cross that road two times a day.
This will be the last.
I'm Bill Gonzalez. Live at nine-six-eight-seven Soldier Creek Road in Lillian. The applicant has stated and used the developments on the south side of ninety-eight to show that this project has compatible zoning and building around it. My point is that each time we change the zoning, allow higher-density zoning, we are also providing more high-density areas for new development to be compatible with. So every time we approve a higher density, we're opening ourselves up to approve more and higher density and lose our rural area entirely. As long as they can move in and say, "Well, there's other densities around us that's that high. How can you turn them down?" We would like for it to stop somewhere so that we've got a rural area. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, sir. All right, I'm going to ask the applicants representative, whether it be Mr. Deal or any of the engineers, if you want to address any of the concerns that have been mentioned
Mr. Chairman, just real quick, a couple of things. As far as the internet service, Riviera also has internet service out there, and they're serving the subdivision across the street. We do have six-foot setbacks, but that'll be twelve feet between the houses, which is a pretty common setback. I'll let Jackson speak to the concerns about drainage because he's done quite a bit of work on that. But I would like to just point out, this is zone B four, which is one of the most intensive business zonings that the county has. Okay. The property owner's willing to downzone the property to go from the B four zoning to the two-point-seven units per acre that we're proposing. So I'll let Jackson address the drainage.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Jackson, you'll probably have to bend over some to get, I know you're tall. Get down to that mic so they can all hear you.
All right, good evening. I am Jackson Burkogler. I work with Aziz Civil. I did the conceptual drainage narrative as well as the generalized drainage utility plan. So basically, the drainage will be designed according to Baldwin County and Aldot standards. I know a lot of you are concerned about the drainage, so I just want to mention a few average peak flow rate reductions. We're seeing a fifty percent average reduction of the peak flow rate to County Road ninety-one, a twenty-five percent reduction to the east property, and a forty-five percent reduction to the US ninety-eight. And I want to mention that on the east property pond, we're using a level spreader along the entire length of the pond to mimic the existing sheet flow that it sees in the existing condition.
Okay.
So if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them best I can.
Okay, anybody on Plant and Commission have a question for either of the representatives here? Okay. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Out of curiosity, you fixed the water. Why is it getting worse?
I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and allow the Plant and Commission, if you have any questions for staff or if staff has any follow-up comments. Matthew, even yourself, if you've got any other comments. But Ms. Mitchell, do you have anything?
I do not.
Or Tyler, do you need to, I know you're here, do you need to add anything?
Not unless you have questions.
Okay. All right, does anybody have any questions for staff on the Plant and Commission? Okay.
I have a question. Can you bring up the slide? Let's see. Page thirteen, where it explains what B four will allow.
Sorry, thirteen of that page, or that document.
Not of the PRD of the rezoning one.
The reason, oh.
Where it talks about B four.
I was trying to wait on both up at the same time. All right, the rezoning. Okay, which slide?
Thirteen. It's from the ordinance.
This one?
Five-point-four. No, not that one. The one about B four, what it's zoned currently.
Here we go. This one? So this shows the current, yeah, this is what's there now in place.
Right.
And then this is the pictorial...
If you could stay, go ahead and stay on the slide that she wants to address.
Okay. Currently, it's zoned B four, and this is a list of everything that can be built there without any rezoning, the way that it's zoned now. And I don't know if that's been discussed or talked about. It's kind of been brushed over tonight's conversation. I don't know if everybody in the room today understands that. Under conditional uses, there's a shooting range, a correctional facility. Well, those, okay. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew.
All right, any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, I will say here on behalf of the staff that in large part, and you can see this in our analysis, in large part, our opinion is predicated on the fact that this existing zoning is B four. We do have an active application for a recreational vehicle park. They've paid the ten-thousand-dollar application fee. And so that was the predicating basis in large part of our recommendation. And so I feel like that might help you all have a context of how we arrived at this conclusion. And then, of course, you have great deference on your part.
I think that's part of my problem here is the fact that the zoning that's there now is wrong, and we're charged to deliberate, you know, an application to make the zoning better, but even making it better is not the right zoning, I don't feel. So that's kind of, that's where I'm at on this.
Matthew, did I hear you correctly that the, did I hear you correctly that the RV park that was put forth in June is still active?
That's correct. There's a three, really a two-step process to approving an RV park. The first is a sketch plan review. The second is a planned development. They've completed the first step, the sketch plan review. Their next submittal would be a subdivision for the RV park. And unlike this one, where you all have broad discretion under zoning, you would not have that same discretion for the RV park because it's already allowed in that B four. So if they do come forward with, if they do continue with that, again, they've already paid the first ten-thousand-dollar application fee. If they come forward now to the next step, then as long as they check all the boxes, they'll be able to move forward with that RV park.
And I guess I'm in the same boat as Mr. Bias. You know, the current B four is incorrect. And at this point, I don't know that RSF two is exactly correct either, but the default position, if the applicant so chose, would be to go to an RV park that if the application is technically correct, our hands would be a little bit tied. Does that sound correct?
That's correct.
And just to quickly address the subdivision question, this is the portion that was split out so that wouldn't affect the current RV park application. Yes, the subdivision was approved last month. This was one of the lots, and the second lot is this one right here. So you can see from the RV plan, it doesn't take into account this other lot. They were already assuming that part would be split out. So this is all one lot still after the subdivision last month.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I do have a problem with it's an urban-like development in a rural area. And I think that's, I think it's more about density than use, and that's just my comment.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. Any other comments, questions?
My concern is if we deny what's in front of us tonight, this RV park that's here on the right hand of our screen is what we're going to get, and we're really not going to like that. And I hear concerns, but this is, I hate to say what's coming, if we don't figure out a way to work with this developer in something of the current status they have come to the table with us. How many units is this, the RV park?
Two-hundred-and-six.
Two-hundred-and-six, okay. Thank you. And that's what we're legal for, or they're legal for today, is two-hundred-and-six units.
All right, I'm going to throw this out. It's not for debate, and this is not for discussion. I'm just going to lay this as, so that you all understand the option. What we're doing tonight is a recommendation to the county commission. Whether you believe they will do this other plan or not, that's up to you folks to decide. I'm not going to take a poll tonight which one you like. I just suggest, because we will be making a recommendation. If we make a recommendation to deny this request tonight, it's going to go to county commission. They're going to deliberate it again and make a decision. If between now and then, you don't like this other plan, you folks, because you obviously are well-connected, and I can appreciate that. So I don't want to sit up here and, it's not me making the decisions, and I certainly don't want to come across as making a threat. If you don't like what we're doing tonight, you're going to get that because I don't know that they'll do that, but that's obviously been submitted. So I would say, before it goes to county commission, you folks need to be together and understand that that might be an option that could come back. And if it does come back to us, as staff has told us, our hands are going to be somewhat tied at that point. So I just want you to know that. But that's besides what we're having to decide here tonight. We still need to make a decision. And so I'm going, one more time, is there any other question? I don't want to close it until you're done, but any more questions or comments? Public hearing is closed. If not, then I'll entertain a motion. This will be a recommendation to the county commission for the rezoning. We'll deal with that one first.
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation. I make a motion that we recommend denial on this case.
Okay. Mr. Bias has made a motion to deny the request.
Second.
Yes, second.
Tom Myers is second to the motion. Any questions or comments on the motion? This is a recommendation to the county commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Do we now take action on these? We still have to take action on it. All right, so for the PRD case, then I'll entertain a motion on this, PRD twenty-two-dash-three.
Is this a recommendation to the county commission or is this? Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we recommend denial to the county commission.
All right, Mr. Bias made a motion to deny. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All right, Mr. Sidewalk, second to the motion. Any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, folks. We're going to move right on. I know it's going to be difficult, so many of you, but if you can quietly, we're going to move on. We have a lot of other items on our agenda tonight. And I'll give just a few minutes for these folks to be able to leave.
Mr. Chairman, we do have one local request for this area as well regarding amendments to the subdivision regulations. Since we have so many folks from this area here right now, would it make sense to hear that real quickly? We would have to bump up item eleven-A from the agenda, but it regards this same area. And if some of these folks wanted to hear it, then they wouldn't have to wait through the rest of the meeting.
All right, I'm sorry, folks, in case you were here for this other item or you want to stay for this item, it affects your area. This is eleven-A. So thank you, Matthew. I think let's do that. We'll take... We'll, we'll take item 11A, we'll move it up on the agenda. This is a proposed text amendment to the local provisions for planning districts 22, 29, and 33.
And, Mr. Chairman, we don't actually even have slides for this. So just so everybody understands what's going on here, folks in this community representing four different planning districts have requested some changes to their local provisions to correspond more closely with some of the local provisions that have been recently adopted. Now, for that process to take place, it has to be initiated. We couldn't bring it to y'all to vote on tonight without y'all first voting to initiate the process. And so that's what's before you tonight. We've handed all of y'all a copy of what they're proposing. You're not voting on that. You're just seeing conceptually kind of what they're talking about as something to consider. Staff will go through those. They are very similar to what has been proposed in the other districts. And so we'll probably chat. Ms. Tracy Gamble is here. She's been the one spearheading with that. So we'll kind of look at what they've proposed, probably make some, I would guess, minor tweaks, correspond with Tracy on that. And then we'd come back to y'all with a formal text amendment. There's a whole bunch of publication procedures, but this would be getting y'all's permission to start that process. Any questions?
Any questions for Matthew?
Okay, thanks, sir.
Do we want to go through these or do you want to just?
There, I don't think there's a need to go through them right now because we, you will, we'll do a full, formal presentation when we're here to actually present that public hearing, a formal public hearing when we present the actual text amendment. And I think Ms. Jamie had something she wanted to address related to this item as well.
Not this particular one, a separate text amendment.
That's right, but, but in other words,
So is Tracy gonna come up?
As part of this.
Okay.
Because this will be an amendment to the zoning ordinance. And Ms. Jamie also had something she wanted us to consider at the same time.
And we have a copy of that, I think, also.
That's right.
Right, everybody has a copy of it. Under the subdivision regulations, well, I wanted to get some consistency regarding utility standards and duplicate what they have under 9.4. A utility service plan requirements, which is under the PUD. I want to start, request a text amendment that this be consistent with the regular subdivision utility standards. And then add a definition of current.
And Ms. Jamie, I apologize because you're right. You're talking about amendments to the subdivision regulations, so let's hold that for a separate motion at the end. I apologize.
Okay.
Do we need to take some sort of, have some sort of motion or action from this board to initiate the process?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize staff to move forward with developing a presentation to come back to the commission on this process.
Okay. Ms. Booth has made the motion to start the process. I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Bias? Okay. Any question or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And do we need to do the same for Jamie, for the subdivision?
We want to do it at the end?
Maybe we just say that for the end.
Yeah.
Thank you, planning commission and, and folks from the area.
Okay. With all of our withdrawals, I think that our next item on the agenda is case number SPP 22-24, Beenville Landing. I'll open the public hearing for that item. Does anyone need to clear any prior communication on this item? All right, Ms. Booth, all yours. I'm sorry? Yes. Well, we'll, I'll call on you in a moment. Okay, Ms. Booth.
Did you have your disclosure?
I already have.
Okay, thank you. Before you, we have a proposed 137-lot subdivision. It is located in Planning District 34, currently unzoned. There is a traffic study that we will discuss later on in the presentation. There are drainage improvements. Wetlands were determined to be non-jurisdictional. We can discuss that later as well. They have a proposed 4,994 linear feet of street to be dedicated to public right-of-way. This is your planning district map. This is your proposed layout. An enlarged view. Site map, aerial map. Your adjacent zoning, planning districts. Excuse me. Traffic study was prepared by Darryl Skipper. Study determined that no required traffic improvements were recommended. The study has been reviewed and accepted by Tyler Mitchell Bonning County Highway Department. And inside the traffic study, it says that comparisons indicate projected traffic volumes would not meet the criteria, minimum criteria. And thus, an eastbound left and westbound right turn lane is not warranted on County Road 10 at the proposed site. Stormwater prepared by Ethan Fisher. Drainage improvements are recommended and are shown on the plat. The drainage plan and stormwater report have been reviewed and accepted by Tyler Mitchell Bonning County Highway Department. The wetland report was prepared by Keith Johnson with Wetland Sciences. The potential, there were potential jurisdictional wetlands that were identified in the wetland delineation after site review was requested by Wetland Sciences. And upon a field visit by the Corps, they were determined to be isolated and non-jurisdictional. Again, there's a letter from the Corps stating the same. Staff does recommend that preliminary plan will be approved for SPP 22-34 for Beenville Landing, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for staff? I take it there aren't none?
I have one. Did we report this one to the school district?
Yes. Although we have not received a response, we did notify them.
All right, any other questions for staff? All right, this time then I'm gonna call on those that have signed up. Is there a representative of the applicant that would like to come up and speak? I'll give you first chance to come up and you need to say something.
Good evening, commission. My name's Ethan Fisher. I work for Engineering Design Group. I'm the engineer that put together this man.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, you have to go down. Or pick it up, whichever way you want to.
I'll have to pick it up, okay. I'm Ethan Fisher. I work for Engineering Design Group. I help provide the information you've seen in this packet and the storm analysis for the site. Like they mentioned, it's 137-lot subdivision in unzoned county. And we went through staff review and addressed all comments per staff comments.
Do you have something? I got a question, but I'll let you go ahead and speak.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we're just here to answer questions that are concerned.
I have one question. Mary, you need to pull up maybe the site plan. And while they're doing that, you'll know what I'm talking about. We have both accesses to the county road right by each other. Did you guys even consider an option of taking and not having those two intersections so close? The third, there's three roadways that run north and south. I'd even thought, why didn't you take the one to the east? But then that puts you as close to the county road, the existing county road. So then my next thought is, why not take an access out to that road? I understand it might be a little bit more paving involved, but separates the entrances to the subdivision. And I just didn't know if there was a reason you didn't want to do that or if you hadn't considered it.
It's mainly because of the direction of flow for the traffic that's gonna be taking the east and west movement, mainly east movement. And you already hit it on the other point is the road north-south, running north-south is unimproved. So we didn't want to connect after that road being unimproved, so.
Okay, anybody have any other questions for?
I have a question. I can't tell. It's very small. What's the pavement width?
It's whatever the, I don't know that we have it on this sheet here. It's actually.
Yeah, we have a 20-foot pavement width, so two ton-for lengths.
I just, it's my opinion that's not wide enough, that it needs to have more, it needs to be wider than that.
I believe that's whatever the county standard would be. The roadway, road width is what we would propose.
Well, that's what's in the subdivision regulations, but those are minimum standards, so you can certainly do more.
Yes, ma'am.
Something I guess I would like to point out too about the storm drainage. You'll see in the report, we over-detained all the storm events, especially the ones coming to County Road 10. Right now, existing conditions out there are not great. So we went, we believe above and beyond normal practice to over-detain stormwater to the tune of over 900, or 90 CFS of reduction on a 100-year storm. So we attempted to make the condition as good as possible out there.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicants represented?
I have one on, I'm gonna say landscape buffers. I see, if I'm seeing this correctly, it's only one landscape buffer to the east. I guess is that, that is the gravel. What is the name of this gravel road here?
That's Bondview Drive. And, and that, that buffer is, is not necessarily that buffer. It is, we are granting right-of-way to the county since that right-of-way is not wide enough on Bondview. So we're, we're deeding property over to them.
So that is what I'm seeing as a landscape buffer on this east side is what you're gonna give to the counties?
Yes.
Are there any requirements on the interior or any other perimeters that may be a staff question? You know, with, with a development like this? Any requirements on perimeters or? I'm assuming the setbacks are good.
That is correct. Setbacks are in line with subdivision regulations.
And there are no, no other landscape plannings required?
No, sir, it's unzoned currently.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna call on those that have signed up to speak. First one will be, oh, did Brett Walters want to speak? Is he here? Did you want to speak?
I'm Brett Walters. Live at 415 West Vernon Foley. This property in question was my dad's property. All of this, which I own property that joins on the northwest corner. And at their death, it was distributed to all the other siblings. And it's been in the family a long time, family. I have, I see both sides of the situation. I know Bonning County is going crazy with development, and it's difficult to stop. I have feelings of seeing some things that I grew up with, agriculture and farming, which is a thing of the past today. And I have friends that live nearby. And I can understand why they may be opposed to this. But in other words, it's in our family too, and we're a close family. And I go on record and not to offend any of my friends that may vote against it, but I'm gonna vote in favor of the subdivision.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I did not realize who the property owners were here. I need to recuse myself from this discussion because of a relationship with this family.
Okay. All right, Donna Davis?
I just want to say ahead of time, I'm not a public speaker. But this Bondview area that they're talking about, it is a dirt road, a little bit of a gravel. It's a little bit of gravel just recently put on it. And the drainage, I don't, they don't have it very well set up here. The drainage on Bondview, the drainage ditches are only to the west and the east on north Bondview. There is no drainage all the way down that road. It stops on 70, is it 70? What's your address? 7690, which is my son's. The drainage ditch stops there, cuts around through and runs through the back 30 acres of the property. The ditch, the drainage ditch. It's on private property. Every bit of that water that drains from that area, whether it's to the north or the west, drains through our private property. And D.H. Horton already has a subdivision connected to our back 20 acres. And I guess the engineer okayed it, but now that drainage is not holding because the house is drained downhill through our 30 acres. And we have had water in the garage. My son's had water in his garage. My sister-in-law, we are a five-unit family that live on this 30 acres. And it's 17225, 17225A and 17225B, County Road 10. We were not even notified. We learned this because my son and daughter live on Bondview, which is connected to family property, the 30 acres. And they have overran us with drainage. And I don't need to tell you what happens when you get drainage. And they have wetlands there. Like they say, and this wetland apparently is irrelevant to them. It holds a lot of varmints and snakes. Every time the drainage comes up, the snakes and every varmit you can think of is on our property. And Bots secure is a watershed. Everything in Bots secure drains downhill. We have Skunk Bayou, Turkey Branch, Shutt Creek, are the three that come to mind now. Everything that drains there drains through our property under County Road 10 onto the hazes property, through Shutt Creek, under Shutt Creek, on 10, and back into Bots secure river. And it's doing that now. And apparently, D.H. Horton isn't doing a very good job because they are devouring everything. They've got the one directly behind it with the 100-something houses. This is 137 houses. There's no way they're gonna be able to drain this. And as you were suggesting, the road cannot handle it. There are no ditches. The only ditch is run through our private property. And we are the ones that are getting inundated. And what doesn't, it will sit there and sit there and sit there. Because Bots secure river isn't gonna drain, the water is not gonna drain from us. It's not gonna drain through hazes property. It's not gonna drain through Nelson property. It's going to sit in our yard, and it will sit till Bots secure decides to take it out. And if you, D.H. Horton is allowed to put this 137 there, we're gonna be dying for it. And like I agree with the gentleman from league, and everything they're having, we're having as well. D.H. Horton is sucking us up, and they don't know what they're doing because they're not from here. We're generational. Every person on that road, the Millers across from Bondview, the LaCarrico Ballers across from Bondview, we're all general. We've lived there entire lives, our families have lived there. This drainage is not gonna work. It didn't work last time. We have livestock. They get underwater. We have cattle, we have ponies, we have chickens, we have ducks. We're rural, we're farm. We have to plant, and we can't plant until the water's gone to feed our cows during winter. This is just, this is not set up. We are not set, we don't have the infrastructure. How many more kids are gonna be shipped to a different school? Bots secure can't take them. Our children now are sent to Mano Springs. We don't have fire hydrants. We have a very small fire department. We're not set up for any of this. We don't have police, everything depends on sheriffs. We're just not set up for this. We are even lower down than league, and they're set up better than we are. We're a small community. Bots secure is very small. This is, and on 65, which connects down to, I'm sure you know where 65 is, all of you are aware. There are three projects being developed there now. We're already having a problem with drainage, sewer, red clay down the streams, right into Bots secure river. It's all coming to us. And apparently, the engineers are not aware, or they're just not familiar with this kind of dealing with this. But we're dealing with it. And I don't understand how they're going to run any more water through our private 30 acres because there is no drainage in that area. We are it. And they're not showing it up there, but we are it. We can't take it. It's eroded, we've, we've lost trees. It's just devastating on our property. And we're not set up for it. And we haven't had enough time. We were just notified two weeks ago about this. And like I said, we weren't notified at all. We had to find out from neighbors. So we have not even had the time to get anybody from the community aware of what's going on. We had to find out from neighbors, so we have not even had the time to get anybody from the community aware of what's going on. D.H. Horton, they promised this when they put the subdivision behind my father-in-law's 30 acres. It didn't work. It didn't work, and now they want to do it again. 16 can't hold the water, 12 can't hold the water. And we do not want to be washed out from our, we have, right now, we have four generations sitting on our family land.
Good mistake, you just gotta wrap it up.
Sir?
You gotta wrap it up.
Oh, I'm sorry. You should've let me know. I didn't know.
No, it's all right.
But we are not ready for this, and neither are they. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have Brittany Wilson. She spoke well for you, huh? Amy Miller. Okay.
She covered a lot of what I had to say. My, my three acres is on Bond View next to hers. My question was, in this request, they want to widen Bond View Road 60 feet. Am I reading that correctly?
They're dedicating right-of-way. They're not doing any improvements to Bond View.
Okay, yeah, so that's a major problem.
They're, they're required, because that's a substandard right-of-way, they're required to, if they do this development, to give additional right-of-way to the county for future development.
On their side?
On that side.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And my, you know, just to touch base on the school system. You know, I live two miles, maybe two and a half miles from Swift School, our area schoolhouse. I raise a grandson, and he's transported all the way to Magnolia Springs, because Swift School can't take them.
I think you cut it off there.
So that would be a major problem, educating our children, our future, and the, I'm sorry, and the teacher-children ratio, you know, it's, I mean, we, we know where these problems lead. So I would ask that you oppose this. We flood, right now, I have sandbags in my garage for a normal day of rain. When the county came in and built up Bond View with their rocks, I have 60-year-old oaks that are, they're washing away. My roots are all out on the ground. The red dirt from the clay road is washing in to my yard, into my garage, into my patio, so that's a constant, you know, us having to clean and whatever, but if they build this property up, Mr. Walters' property, for D.R. Horton to put all these houses in, I can't imagine what it's gonna be like. It's, it's not gonna be good, so I ask that you please oppose this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Davis?
Hey, thanks for your time. Dr. Charles Davis, I live on Bond View, 7690. I've been there for about 13 years now, and I'm not gonna touch base on the water drainage. I think everybody's got that covered. There are some power lines on Bond View that are leaning from Sally that have never been fixed, and Bond View is very poorly maintained by the county, so I know if they give them the easement, it'll be their responsibility, but they haven't maintained what's there now, so they're not gonna do anything, I don't feel, with that extra feet, and Bond View's become more of a safety and health concern. We get illegal dumping on a monthly basis. I've sent multiple emails to the Sheriff's Department and Dale Patterson at the county for cleanup. We've had everything from sofas to abandoned cars. My brother-in-law's picked up drugs on the road, because there were drug drops. People will drop drugs on the side of the road, someone will come by and pick them up. We've intercepted them before. And Grab, Bond View's just been paved, not paved, but gravel. I've tried to get the county to pave it for years, but we only add gravel. And since it's been gravel, and we have a subdivision on the north, Hidden Lakes, and this will be on the south, there's a lot of traffic on Bond View on a gravel road. I can't let my kids play out in the yard because of gravel dust. There's constantly cars going through. We have to bring them inside every time a car comes by. We have five air filters in our house to keep the dust down. My two-year-old niece lives next door, and she's on a nebulizer with chronic respiratory issues. If we have a subdivision on the north and a subdivision on the south, and we get a lot of connection traffic between them, it's gonna put our families at risk with the dust, the people at Hidden Lakes at risk, and all these future residents. So I just don't think we're at the point, infrastructure-wise, to have more people along Bond View. If we can get it paved, maybe another story, but as of right now, I just don't think we're ready for this.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Nerissa Nelson?
We meet again. I am the Nelson that this flows down to. I live on Shutt Creek. We're fixing to change the name of it, because I have A-D-M out there today, because I have affluent from somebody's septic tanks or somebody something in my creek right now. It is virtually green. So we've already got some problems out there to begin with, and everybody knows where Bon Secure is. Am I right? Everybody knows the little tiny fishing village that it is? Does anybody think that 130-whatever-seven lot subdivision that are, you know, three feet apart is conducive to that area that is even like that area? Is there anything in that area that is like this? I'll tell you, no. The only thing that we have is the one that you've, we've already opened the door to, which is Hidden Lakes, which is causing all these problems now. So I would ask for you to deny this petition. I have another question, too. Where's the retaining ponds?
They're on screen.
I'm sorry?
They're on screen.
On screen?
They're on the screen for you to see.
Okay, can you tell me where they are?
The upper left-hand corner is Common Area 2, and the bottom left-hand corner is Common Area 1.
Okay, Common Area. Back here. Common Area 1 is the wetlands, so I'm assuming they're not using that for-
They are non-jurisdictional, and they will be allowed to fill those, and they have accommodated those inside the drainage calculation for Common Area 1.
So they're gonna be using the wetlands for their retaining ponds, correct?
They're gonna be filling the wetlands and making it a retaining pond.
Okay, and then the other one is up in the top left-hand corner?
Yes ma'am.
Correct? And there's gonna be how much of a pond there?
I don't have it on the screen, but I'm pretty sure that the engineer will be happy to answer that question for you.
Okay, and I really kinda wanna know what the pre and post-development CFS is, and at what points those are, those measurements are being taken? Are they be taken by Donna's house that's being washed away already, or is it just somewhere else? Does anybody know?
That can be answered by the engineer. If, if you continue, they'll answer your questions.
If you'll just pose the questions, and I'll, I'll get answers for it, but go ahead, pose all your-
I wanna, I wanna know what the CFS is, and at what point of discharge they're measuring those. And how many, how many houses per acre is this proposed? Because the notice I got, which is the one that Donna brought to me, had a 29-acre piece of property, and you're saying this is 40-something acres?
There's two parcels.
Okay, but I, there's two parcels. Uh-uh. The notice that-
Okay.
The notice that we got, how many units are gonna be on this?
137 lots.
I'm, I'm sorry. How many acres per unit? Or how many units per acre?
I would have to look back. I'm not sure what the density's on here.
Yeah, because when I figured it out, it's like 5.7 houses per acre, and that, my little house down on Shutt Creek, which I still say we're gonna rename, that would be 15 houses on my piece of property. 15 houses on my piece of property. So I would ask for you to please deny this, and this is not conducive to Bon Secure at all.
Okay.
Not what we want.
Thank you. Donald Asprey?
Don Asprey, 16912, County Road 16. Our property, the south border of our property is the northern border on the east side for this subdivision. The question I have is the 20-foot property is gonna be given to the road to widen the right-of-way. Is that gonna be used, or considered to be used for a ditch to provide drainage to go back toward the north, where that ditch on the west side of Bond View Road crosses over to the east side before it goes to your house? Because right now, there's nothing to allow that water to cross that far down. At Lot 42, there is a ditch, I mean, a culvert that crosses the road. We've had that road so flooded that the school buses can hardly get through. It is a big water issue, but my concern is just, if they're gonna widen that, are they also gonna consider widening the road all the way to the north? Because the property on the west side is the only property they could use to widen the right-of-way. Hidden Lakes doesn't have the property available, so are they gonna take my property as they go north to widen Bond View Road in the future? Just questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, that's all I had signed up to speak. Let me, just a couple of things, and I'm not speaking in favor or against. I'm not setting it up for that. I just want you folks to understand the difference between what you heard in the previous meetings and the one you're here on tonight, is this is unzoned property. So that you understand, it makes it difficult for us, whether we like or dislike 60-foot wide lots. This is allowed by right on this property. We can do our best to make sure that things, safety nature, if there are safety issues, drainage is gonna be dealt by our engineering staff. They will have to, they have not yet submitted. They did enough to show engineering staff what their proposal is, but they still have not provided, and they're not required to. If they get an approval tonight, they will then have to establish a full set of construction plans for all drainage, roadways, and utilities, and submit it to our engineering staff at the county, who will review it to make sure it meets the county standards. So what they're trying to find out tonight, tonight, is whether or not we're going to approve this development as laid out. But just keep in mind, this is unzoned property. It, it really makes it such it's difficult for us to, to get into some of the things that we may actually agree with you on, but, but these are the regulations of the county, and we're bound to that. All right, so with that, that's all I had signed up to speak. Anybody have any questions, or Mary, do you have any follow-up questions or comments?
I just want to respond that it's 3.1 acres is the density.
3.1 per acre?
3.1 lots per acre.
Okay.
I have one question for staff, and this may not be required in this packet, but do we, do we get, or is there required letters of, the service provider letters for?
They, they are, they were not placed into your packet, but they are provided, and they are available on the public folder. So do you have a particular provider that you have a question?
My question on this one would be, where are, I'm assuming that Baldwin County Sewer is, would be the provider for the sewer, and where is that, where do they project to take that to? And who, and who might be our internet provider in this region?
Check all the way out.
Well, she's looking that up, and I'll just mention to the engineers there, if, if you guys have a follow-up, be prepared to come up if you want to address some of the comments.
Okay, the wastewater will be treated by Baldwin County Sewer at the Fort Morgan wastewater treatment plant.
Going to Fort Morgan. Okay. Anything else?
Baldwin County Sewer Service at the Fort Morgan Treatment Plant.
One more, any on, and this may not, again, may not be required for us, but do we, who would, who might would be their internet provider in this area? And it, again, it may not be required, or however. And maybe while you're looking at that, you know, it's a question, again, has our school system been notified? You know, this is, I don't, I don't wanna say, I don't wanna say a red flag, but if we're, if we're, if we're sending students at current to Magnolia Springs from Bon Secure, you know, when we rent, when we, you know, let the county know, or whoever, that we have a subdivision coming in, and we're already maybe somewhat at a problem, we've gotta get some feedback on, you know, we can't handle what we have, or, you know, some response sometime, I think, would be. It seems like we don't ever get any response from them, and also, a situation like this, you know, we need some help, or we need you saying what, what the state, what our state is at current.
As far as the broadband service, they do not have to provide a letter at preliminary plat stage, but before final plat, they should have at least one lot that has available service to that community, and then they can connect to it if they so desire.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? You guys wanna respond? There were a couple of comments, I think, that were directed to you guys.
Okay, I'll start with the, the last one there. We do have a letter from Point Broadband saying that they will serve the development, so that is for internet. So kinda talking, can we, can we get the plat back up on the screen? Can I talk through some of our drainage stuff? So as staff pointed out, we, we do have ponds in Common Area 1 and 2, but we also have one in 3 and in Common Area 4. So we kinda have our largest one in Common Area 1. Basin 1 has about, let's see, 33.29 acres coming to us, so majority of that 44 acres is coming towards County Road 10. So we have a very large detention pond right there. The next biggest basin is Basin 2, which is up in the left corner. So that one has 8.72 acres coming to it, so we have another good-sized detention pond up there. We have a smaller basin, that's 3.71 acres, that goes out towards Bond View to that pipe that goes under Bond View that y'all mentioned. Well, we, so-
Just, just, no, please, just address us.
Right, sorry. The, so, yeah, as part of the engineering process, we evaluate what is going there currently from our site, just our site, and we meet pre-, post-, in that area. So we're meeting it and reducing it by at least 8 to 10% based off what is currently going there to what is, you know, we're proposing. And that larger, that Basin 1, we're reducing that by upwards of 60%, we kinda, I kinda mentioned the drainage condition along County Road 10. So at the previous plan, rezonings and stuff, they're talking about reducing it by 20%, so we're even going above and beyond that in this case of 60%, so that's above and beyond. So we are accounting for each individual basin area that's going to different places. So, what else? The, the right-of-way, so yes, we are, we basically established the eastern property line as established over there, and offset that 60 feet into our property, so that the eastern line is staying where it is staying, or where it lives today, and we're just giving enough property on our side to make that 60 feet. So it shouldn't affect any of the owners on the east side.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
I think that was it. We were mainly just wanting to address the, the drainage. There was a lot of questions, concerns over that. And the only other thing I'd say to the, there were some comments about, you know, does this fit in in the area? You know, some of the ones they've already noted, or made mention of, Hidden Lakes is a quarter mile away. Similar Riverside and Rosewood to the north is two miles away. Sagewood and Wellborn Lake is a mile away. And all these are very similar to this, so I would say, yes, you know, majority of this area is agricultural, but it's also been an area that, that provides subdivisions and areas for people to move into that need the homes. So I think we fit in, if you take a look at kind of the surrounding areas, and within two miles, just we, we named six there. I just wanna make sure that that was, but y'all are aware of that, but I'm sure y'all are.
Okay. Any other questions, any questions for the engineer? Okay, thanks, sir. All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Yes, sir.
I have one question for Mary. Mary, is it, is it safe to say that staff recommendation of approval is based on the fact that this application is technically correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other? Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to be clear on my comment about the road width. It's primarily about safety, and in Baldwin County, there are more vehicles per household than there are people per household, and there's a lot of subdivisions that, well, in most of the newer subdivisions, cars are parking on the road or on the sidewalks, or, you know, there's just not enough room. So that's why I mentioned the roadway width, well, the pavement width, and there are alternatives to that other than widening. Alley's are another option, so I just wanted to bring that out and tell you why I mentioned the roadway width. Thank you.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments?
One question, that, I didn't hear anything on fire safety. Is that required, or the flow and verification through our fire departments that they can- services, or are there any flow tests required here?
There are flow tests have been reported, and there will be adequate fire flow and fire protection for this development.
And to be clarified, to clarify that, at final plat, they'll be required to flow test the hydrants and prove that they meet that ISO standard, and they will not get final plat approval without that.
I might make one comment that this is maybe more for the, some of the layout and some of what I see. This is, some of these developments are tough for us to sit up here and look at, you know, ask, and oh, it's unzoned, and there's very little that we can do up here if their boxes are checked. And, you know, maybe this is for the, our developers that, you know, I really like, I don't like the two entrances coming out, I guess, onto 10, you know. I mean, it seems like maybe we could put a little extra and maybe pave a portion of Bond View and bring one of these out, because let's just cut this thing in half and you got, that would let 70 households out one, on one road and 70 out on the other. You know, this is, in some ways, aesthetically unpleasing from the aerial that I see, but again, I know that there's not anything because it's unzoned. So, you know, as we see more and more of these come forward, you know, any, any love that you can give us up here with extras that you do with, that might be repaving a portion of the road or giving us an extra landscape buffer, you know, that would, it makes it nicer for us and maybe a nicer end product.
Okay, any other comments, questions? All right, if not, then I'm going to entertain a motion.
Just to re-clarify, we don't really have, at this point in this process, we, we don't have anything that we truly can do other than be sure that they meet the subdivision requirements at this point. Is that correct?
That's correct, and it's important because everybody in here witnessed the case in Lillian. Well, Lillian is zoned, and that gives them a lot, that gives you a lot more leeway to decide if this is compatible with the area. This case, this area is not zoned. The citizens have not voted to bring zoning into their area, so you, they have not given you that power to evaluate compatibility.
Given that, I'll move that we approve.
Okay. Mr. Bullard's made a motion to approve SPP 22-24. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All right, Mr. Seibert, seconded the motion. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Bice? All right, we'll open the public hearing now for case, excuse me, case, SPP 22-34, Magnolia Acres Phase 2. Does anybody need to clear any prior communication on this item? Okay, Ms. Boo?
Give me one moment, please, sir. Before you have a 15-lot subdivision up for preliminary plat approval, it is currently located in Planted District 14. They have not implemented zoning, and this subject property, for this proposed development is not a part of the proposed Planted District 39 that's being considered for zoning. Traffic study was not required. Drainage improvements, drainage narrative has been provided by their engineer. Wetlands identified on-site is non-jurisdictional, and there is a proposed road stellata lane for 1,090 feet to be dedicated for public right-of-way. Your Planted District map. On the screen before you right now is existing Phase 1, Magnolia Acres, lots 1 through 10. What's in red is the proposed lots, 11 through 25, and what's in green is going to be your drainage and your common areas. Your site map, your aerial map. Wetland report was prepared by Barry Vitor. Non-jurisdictional wetlands were identified on the plat. Ashley Campbell, Natural Resource Planner, has concurred with the wetland report. However, the wetlands have already been partially filled, and it appears that the stormwater that the wetlands previously stored is now flowing to property west of the subject site. On the next page, you will see complainants and some pictures. The adjacent property owners, Jack and Sandra Dixon, have provided some pictures that show some additional runoff, and we have some comments that are recommended as conditions for approval, is to have the engineer reevaluate the site to confirm that there will be no adverse impacts, and if necessary, to install measures prior to development to keep the runoff on subject site and diverted from flowing to adjacent property. These are some of the pictures. And these were also, I believe, included in your staff report. Staff does recommend that the preliminary plat be approved, subject to compliance with subdivision regulations and with the following conditions. As previously stated, have the engineer reevaluate the site to confirm there will be no adverse impacts. If necessary, install measures prior to development to keep runoff on subject site and diverted from flowing to adjacent property. Submit construction plans to Baldwin County Highway Department for review and issuance of subdivision permit prior to commencement of any construction. During that construction review will be a deeper evaluation of the drainage report and the calculations. Once the preliminary plat is approved, it is valid for two years. If final plat approval has not been granted within those two years, an extension request may be submitted to allow for a one- or two-year extension as needed. And before final plat approval can be granted, engineered drawings or as-built shall be provided to show drainage basin has been installed as designed and approved by Baldwin County Highway Department. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for staff?
Was the phase- Was the Phase 1 drainage infrastructure constructed as part of Phase 1? I guess what I'm asking is the drainage infrastructure proposed in Phase 2 servicing Phase 1 as well. That may be a question for the engineer.
I will defer that to the engineer. Yes, sir.
Mary, were we able to, I mean, I know we have pictures and a letter talking about the wetlands being partially filled, and it sounds like insinuating that that created flooding on their property. Do we know if that's the case? Did we have anybody from the county look at that to see if wetlands have been filled?
I believe Ashley Campbell can answer that question for you.
Ashley, could you help us with that?
Yes, I've been on-site, and the area of non-jurisdictional wetlands have, have been filled under a land disturbance permit, so that was allowed, and it was before we had the stormwater management area language in our zoning, I mean, in our ordinance. So I would say they've been filled, they were permitted to be filled, but the evaluation of off-site impacts is occurring currently during this application. I did not witness stormwater flowing off-site. The citizens that are complaining took pictures to, and submitted them, so.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
I do want to make one comment. So this particular subdivision, there's been longstanding violations associated with the development work on this subdivision, and this is part of the lengthy process to try to get it cleaned up. Did I summarize that correctly?
Okay. All right. If no questions for staff, then I'll, is there a representative for the applicant or the applicant here? Yes, sir. Give us your name and address, please.
Hey, my name is James Ellis. 15833 Catesby Drive, which is, was just added in there. That's the west side. Tell you what, can you pull up that drainage? I think drainage narrative would be the best one. Can you pull the one up that's in green, has highlighted? I think that was one of the biggest things that I wanted to chat with you guys about. And as he had said, you know, we had a lot of issues. I'm going to be very forthright with you. I'm a young buck. I'm trying to figure it out. I don't send engineers up here. I get in here and get my hands dirty, and I've screwed up a bunch. I've went to college. I'm figuring it all out. So I, I can't tell you everything to do. I can tell you what not to do. So this was a little bit of a learning curve for me, and, you know, we're getting there. We're, I've been involved with several other deals since then, and I feel like we're trying to do a little better as I move on, but this was, this was my baby. So anyways, such as, such as that. We did know that there were some issues with Mr. Dixon. He and I, actually, when I saw him here, and funny, we, I didn't even realize that was him. He's my high school history teacher. So that was pretty cool. But anyways, we knew that there were some issues on that west side. Ashley Campbell had brought it to our attention. Per the drainage narrative, that was originally established by our engineer. There was actually not for the Phase 2, which is on the east side, there was actually not a drainage ditch required on that west, which by the pictures, obviously, there's some stuff going on in there. So I told him, regardless of what your drainage calculations are, we want to have happy neighbors. We want to make this thing good. Go ahead and put that west ditch in there. Everything flows to the southwest, so of course, it would be flowing south. We incorporated that in with Phase 2, so we knew that this would no longer be an issue. The issues that we had in the past with violations, we sort of had to backtrack. My pops had sold his house. We had had subdivision approval. Hell, I thought that was it. I didn't know we were supposed to go get highway department permits at that time. I was thinking, hey, we're going to go in here and do some work. Had it all goofed up. Dad needed permits for his house. House sold. We had to get him a house out there. We're moving house. The house is on the site. Anyways, I just grouped it up. So we went back, fixed everything, got it all right. We're going back around the second time, and hopefully, we can knock it out of the park. You guys got any questions for me?
Any questions? Okay, thanks, sir. Keith McEachair?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Chairman, I'm Keith McEachair. I live at 15819 Vic Mickelson Lane from them. I live in that bottom right-hand corner right there, and since a year ago, they dug a ditch around, all this water runs through my yard, in my backyard, my yard, instead of that drainage. And I was just wondering, with this Phase 2, are you going to go and fix this? That's, that was my concern, because I do have photographs and stuff, too, of when they cut the ditch and where the water runs and all that now. But it doesn't run uphill. The middle of that area's got a hump there. The water don't run uphill. That's all I had to say to them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jack Dixon?
Obviously, in Baldwin County, there's a drainage problem with every development. We've got one here, but I talked to Mr. Ellis, and he's going to, he's going to fix it. He's going to fix it, okay? As far as the wetlands, I called the Corps, told them he was going to fill it in. I'm just fussing. They just said, okay. Called ADEM. This is going to happen. Nobody did anything. But the only one's going to do something about it is Mr. Ellis. You can't fill in wetlands or low areas in Baldwin County. You just can't do it. That water's got to go somewhere. But I appreciate your time, and Mr. Ellis and I talked at length. He will, he will do, he will handle our problem. He will do that. I can say that. He's a good man. And he needs a permit. That's about it, to get, get started.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, sir. All right. Brett Henberg?
I'm at 15884 Lilly Lane. I live next door to Mr. Dixon, and I have just three acres, so I don't have half the problems, even a fraction of what everybody here was earlier. But I just wanted to make sure, as far as the drainage, that was my concern, too, because water backs up. They took all the trees out, and that was one thing I wanted to make sure of, too. And I get along with Ellis's as well. I've had good communication with them. Him and I have talked many times, so I have faith that they're going to do it. But I just really, I need to rely on you guys to make sure that that drainage doesn't come on my property, because we have enough water just on Lilly Lane to where if it's, during storms, I mean, it's impassable. I mean, we, we can't even get out. I mean, you're talking two or three feet of water. So we don't need any extra kind of coming on our property whatsoever. So that was my biggest thing. Everything else, I really can't control. I mean, it's just progress. I just want to make sure they handle the, I think the probably reason that you weren't using the retention pond, retention area in Phase 1 is because you were digging all the dirt, and you didn't want it wet, more than likely, huh? I mean, I would think. I mean, they were just digging it out to use the dirt, but neither here nor there. I just want to make sure that's, that's good, that's all. No problem.
All right. So my take on this, it sounds like this process we're going through is getting ready to eliminate some problems that we've had by them now having to go through a subdivision process, dealing with our engineering staff. Tyler Mitchell, Tyler's group will be looking at the, all the drainage and making sure that it is done correctly this time. So Tyler, anything you need to add?
No, I'll just say that I think somebody had already stated it, but we'll go through a final, you know, final design calculation review at the time before we issue a subdivision permit. So that will be done along with the construction plan review.
Okay. All right, that's all I had signed up to speak. I'm going to close the public hearing. Does anybody on the panel have any questions for staff? Mary, did you have anything else to add?
I believe Brandon has a question.
Mary, your, your, your condition, your first condition about reevaluating the site to confirm there'll be no adverse impact, does that include all surrounding properties?
It will.
I just want to make sure we capture, like, everybody.
Okay. Okay, any other questions, comments? Not to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve SPP 22-34 for, recommend for approval, conditions to stubs, subject to conditions provided by staff.
Okay, Mr. Mullins made a motion to approve. Have a second?
Second.
Okay. So we have a second? Ms. Burnett, anybody have any comments, questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We've withdrawn the next item, so now we're down to open a public hearing for, no, we're not. Are we?
Next would be SPP 22-31 South Bend Village.
But we've already had a public hearing. We're going to open it again.
Oh, yeah. That's right. We don't need to open the public hearing for this one.
Okay, but I did have somebody sign up, so I may let that one person speak. But, all right, so this will be case number SPP 22-31 South Bend Village Phase 3 and 4. Ms. Mitchell?
So I'm not going to go through most of this. I'm just going to jump to the end where we address the gas well. I will point out that they have one, all right, we've gone from 165 lots to 164, so let me show you what they're proposing to do. All right, so as far as the history of the well, it was approved in 1993, declared dry and abandoned in 93. It's like the end of the year, and then was also plugged, and I found details. There's actually a really helpful website, this Alabama Oil and Gas Board website, where you can find the permit number for every well in the county. It's a little disturbing. I didn't realize there's so many. But it goes to, like I said, there's a whole timeline. So this, this is a letter that they provided saying that no local, state, or federal permits are required, and we've done a little research. Ashley and I were in contact, well, we've been trying to contact the people at the Oil and Gas Board, and Ashley spoke briefly with someone, but they, there does not appear to be any actual permitting. It seems like most of that's done at the local level. And I'll just show you, this is the proposed change. So they took out this lot, and the red indicates where the well is. Now, I did measure it, because I was curious. It's approximately 15 feet from the lot line and 25 feet to the edge of the building. Now, and again, this is normally controlled by local provisions, which we don't have, but I was, I did a little research on places where they do have some sort of setbacks. Alberta, Canada has 15 feet. Weld County in Colorado specifies 25 feet. Um, Alberta, Canada has 15 feet. Weld County in Colorado specifies 25 feet. Longmont, Colorado, 150 feet buffer, building setback. So just to give you an idea of some of the things that are out there, but as I said, we do not actually have that in place. So, um, we feel like they, they addressed it to the extent that we have regulations for, um, so, but we do in our regulations, it specifies, you know, in sections 4.56 and 4.57, that they would have to comply with any local, state, and federal permits should we discover in the next, you know, during the active period of the preliminary plat, if we were to discover there's some kind of permit, you know, that would be required, that they would have to do that. Um, and then as a possibility for a condition approval, if you did want to increase, uh, the setback, I, you know, that would be your discretion. But, um, just to show you the numbers that are there, um, and that's all that I have.
Okay. Somebody have, anybody have questions for staff?
Is there any sort of like disclosure that has to get attached to, uh, this being filed?
There does not appear to be. It looks like you do have to go through this process of showing that it's capped, which they have done. And there, there are all these details that, you know, there's, there's cement, there's some kind of mud slurry, there's a welded plate. So they have documented what was done and when. And there does not seem to be any kind of regulations as far as marking it, disclosing it. And I actually was looking through the county. We do have some of these in some subdivisions that we, cause we've never thought to check this. This has never come up that I'm aware of. So, um,
It's, it's not necessarily recorded on the property deed either.
Not, sometimes we'll get a title that will say that someone has well rights, or, but it doesn't say that there actually is one. In this, in this case, their title did not mention it. It did not come up.
Okay.
I have a question. So removing the lot that the well is located on, will, moving forward, that, um, whatever's approved and moves forward for the subdivision includes something that says this is an unbuildable lot, can never be disturbed?
That would be, I assume something, can they add that as a condition? There'd be some sort of, like, it says on the plat, it shows that it's capped, but I don't know.
And this is part of the common area now.
Right. And this is, people in this room know what that is, but I'm talking about moving forward that, that we don't have an accident or anything in the future to have it recorded.
Let me just say here that we don't have any regulations that govern this and we did a lot of work and we can't find any regulations that would allow, that outside of, in state, federal, that would allow us to govern this. They, they, if they wanted to plant a lot above this, we can't find anything that says they couldn't. So they were generous in removing the lot. Um, and they do show it on the plat. It's part of the common area. And under our regulations, they are not permitted to, they're, they're not permitted to construct a single family residence in that common area. I think I would be cautious about, uh, going anything beyond what our regulations require in this situation, especially since they've gone via the extra step and removing that one lot there. That's just how I would advise the planning commission in this situation.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, uh, do, if something were to occur, would, would we have any legal, not personally, but would, uh, the county have any legal liability if there were an incident or accident?
I don't see that we would. I mean, every situation is different and very factual and everything, but there's no regulations that the, um, department could find that regulates how far it has to be from a setback and things like that. And so in the absence of some regulation that we're breaching by not making them a bye-bye, I don't know how the county would be liable for something that they approved, um, in this situation.
Um, has staff, staff obviously has done a fair amount of research on this. Has staff talked to the American Petroleum Institute, API?
No.
That might be a good place to, uh, talk about what the, the long-term ramifications of this type of a well might be.
We'll try to contact them. I can do it tomorrow.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Did I, did I hear it to correct the amount? I think you said it. Are they designating this by removing that lot? Are they designating this common area now?
Yes.
And our, and our regulations do say that they, if they designate a common area, they cannot build in it.
They don't say that they can't build on it. It just has to be used for the common area of the development. Their plat-
So they could put a gazebo, for instance.
That's correct. That's correct. And their plat's gonna show that there's a test well there now. So-
And you can't sell part of the common area once you have the common area-
That was gonna be my next question.
And it's on the plat like that. So it's not sellable as a lot or anything else to anyone.
So at least at a bare minimum, we have, by designated common area, there is a quote-unquote regulation governing that lot moving forward.
Correct. For the Alabama law.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Mr. Presati, I know you signed up, but we did have a public hearing. I'm not gonna open it back up again. Hopefully they've addressed, yeah, I think you were the one that brought this issue to the floor. It sounds like to me they've addressed it. So, uh,
Yes, they all.
You're gonna have to come on. I'll, I'll let you come up to the mic, but you're gonna have to be.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, the commission. Uh, I'm glad that the staff has done due diligence. Um, the GSA office has a field office in Daphne. Uh, I contacted them. What we have, as far as this goes, is acceptable as far as what they have. The well is supposed to be marked. It is supposed to be marked. It's not mandatory that it's marked, but 30 years old, it gets lost. That's beside the point. Um, if it is disturbed, the well cap has to be replaced 10 feet below whatever grade it is under. Say, they put a retention pond, it has to be 10 foot below the bottom of that retention pond and recapped, replugged. So, but that was all answered by the GSA office in Daphne and they were very helpful. Um, the only other thing I would like to have clarification on, with this separate phase, this is showing 60 of the 70 acres. This is not showing the full acreage of this property. This wasn't brought up at the last meeting because the old well was brought up and then it kinda got shuffled to the side. This is 60 acres of a 70-acre plat. Uh, where's the other 10 acres? What is the plans for this other 10 acres? Say where the northwest, yeah, northwest corner.
There is a very odd extension. I remember it goes with northwest.
That's Frigo Lane.
It's so thin. There's this part of it.
That, that is part of it. This is the, the other 10 acres of this property. What are the plans for this? Uh, why is this not in the subdivision plan as we see it now? We've got 60 or 70 acres.
But it's a separate parcel?
It's part of the same parcel, but it is not, he's correct, it's not shown as part of the subdivision. And I don't know if, it has not been formally split out. Do you have, do you have a comment?
Okay. I need to understand on this. Is it a separate?
Yeah. Well, I think we need the surveyor or the SC Civil up here because this is the first time I've heard of this. It's something we should have caught as staff, but you can't just randomly exclude a parcel from the subdivision.
Like, oh, God, it's just, there's a small-
You need to come up to the microphone, please.
Mr. Presati, thank you. Will, is there anything else?
Uh, one more thing. Just one, and it's-
All right, be quick.
Okay. I wanna make sure there is a guarantee because there are, uh, Gaineswood is also expanding their subdivision. It's already been 20 years old when this was all put in. I wanna make sure there is a guarantee that the city of Fairhope can provide water for these subdivisions, especially this one far south, because of the other three above.
They've already been addressed that. So they've provided information on that. So I know that's taken care of.
Okay.
Mr. Dill, I want one of y'all to come up and address the parcel number, or parcel issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, this is the landowner's son-in-law, uh, Mr. Carnley. Uh, when you click on it, it shows the same parcel number. However, it's distinctly separate parcel, the, where the property lines meet at that corner. It's like 76 acres. So it's a large remnant parcel. The developer's not purchasing it. It's not part of this. There are zero plans for that parcel. The seller is keeping.
I put a barn and farm as far out. You can see on that map.
Uh, probably the simplest way to move forward here. I'd certainly take, uh, the surveyor's word for this, but to, you can just condition on approval on, on that being a, a legal separate parcel. And then we can just carry on. If it turns out it's not, then, then it's gonna be a denial. So we'll just take their word for it and, uh, you can just may, put that condition on it. And if it's wrong, then the subdivision gets denied.
David, do you know if it's, is there one legal description for the whole piece? Or is there, are there legal descriptions in pieces? In other words, is there a separate parcel description for that piece that they're already on file?
Yeah, they're all, they're all quarter, quarter, half-quarter parcels. Those, those property lines do meet at that point right there. It's mapped. When you click on it, it maps as the same parcel number. I've seen, I've seen in the GIS mapping where you'll click on a parcel and a parcel across the street has the same parcel number. So it's, they're separate parcels. It just has the same number.
All right. Anybody have any questions? Anybody confused by that? Are you okay with that?
Yeah. Well, I've got a question about what, why did a citizen have to come forward and identify the well? Was it because it's loc, localized?
That's, it's not something that we checked for and it didn't show up in the title search. So it was-
So the civil engineering?
Well, we requested title from a title company. The surveyors usually don't do title work other than just to mark the pins on the property. I just know, we know, we rely on a title company to provide for the title.
Okay. All right. Are they just rubber stamping this and, and letting this stuff go through and collecting the money?
No, no, sir. Not at all.
Why did you guys miss it and email?
No, sir, not at all. Um, we, the developer hires an environmental consultant and they do a phase one on the property. This is something that should have been caught by the phase one. Uh, we do not do that. We don't do title work. We don't rubber stamp anything at our firm.
Understood, understood. Okay.
Some, just wanna clarify.
Somebody was hired to find this kinda stuff.
They did not find it. And, and come to find out, um, and I've done work in this area for over 30 years. I didn't realize, excuse me, again. I didn't realize that, uh, at that point in time, there were around, I think they said 100 wildcat wells dug all in this area. None of them were productive. All of them were closed and capped off. So they're all over this area. They spent like $30 million, um, thinking they might find something and, and they, none of them found anything. So they're all inactive. They're all capped up, capped off well below the ground. Uh, the gentleman was just up here with me. He was looking, he found a map, which I didn't find. Um, there's actually some of them that show up on the map that are, look like they're under people's houses right now. So apparently it's, it's not something everybody knew about.
Okay.
And this is the map. If you zoom in, um, you can actually see them all. Like I said, we just discovered this in researching this, this issue. And the reason we find out about the last meeting is because a neighbor said, I know that there's a well, cause that was the first we heard of. And as far as the parcel numbers, there are two distinct parcel numbers. So there are two clearly distinct parcels.
Okay, good. All right. So wrap this up. It sounds like to me we've addressed that we, we have found the well that's marked on the map. Um, the parcel number is not an issue. Sounds like that was, Ms. Mitchell has found that to be a separate parcel. So we're good on that. Any other questions, comments for the engineer?
I have a question. Just to confirm, the pavement width is, um, 21 feet?
It's, I think it's three and a half Matthews long.
Pardon?
I think that's our new standard of measurement.
18? No, wait a minute.
Yeah. It's 20, they're 20.
24?
20, 20 feet of asphalt and then you got the valley going.
Okay. That's what I need to know. Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dill. All right. Any other questions for staff? This is not a public hearing, so we, when they're closing it, so, uh, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve.
Okay. Mr. Vice made a motion that we approve.
Subject to staff, um, contingencies.
Okay. You have a second?
Seconded.
Mr. Cybert seconded the motion. Any questions, comments on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. Motion carries.
I know, can't help it.
All right. We'll open our next public hearing is case number CSP 22-37 Palms Vet Clinic. Does anybody need to clear any prior communication on this item? Ms. Rose?
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. I'm pleased to present CSP 22-37, the Palms Vet Clinic. This is the approximate location of the proposed clinic. It is in Planning District 15 and Zoned B3. The subject property is located east of State Highway 181 and north of Milton Jones Road in Daphne. It's approximately 4.3 acres. The applicant is Vince Lacoste with Bethel, Bethel Engineering, and the owner is Yoda Properties LLC. The request from the applicant is to construct a 17,000 square foot building to be used as an animal clinic. Here's the subject property on the locator map as well as the aerial map. You can see the adjacent land use to the north is commercial, Zoned B2. To the south and east, we have RSFE, residential, single-family district zoning. To the south, it's residential. To the east, it's cropland. And then over to the west, we have vacant land use. It is within Daphne city limits and their zoning is B3 professional business. Here are the property images. These are the zoning requirements for B3 zoning. And as you can see highlighted, an animal clinic is allowed use. This is the site plan and the site data table showing the setbacks for B3, which have been met, as well as the parking. Here's a zoomed in image of the site plan as well as additional information with the parking. They have exceeded the amount of parking required. There will be no loading area. And as you can see highlighted in red, the area where the dumpster will be located. Here are the elevations. This is, this is the clinic area of the building, the boarding area, and then the floor plan showing you the clinic and the mezzanine area and the boarding area. Here's their erosion and sediment control plan, their updated drainage narrative that was sent to me yesterday, their landscape plan and the proposed trees. I've also zoomed in here. This is the updated from your staff report showing you that they have, they, their canopy trees, their understory trees and the shrubs, their agent permit. They have addressed the comments from the highway department. So they have, um, fulfilled that. There were no additional comments. All right. The proposed use does conform to the zoning ordinance. The submitted site plan does meet the setbacks for B3 zoning. The master plan indicates this future land use as commercial for the property. And you can read this in the staff report. And staff recommends approval with the following conditions: submittal of a turnout permit from ALDOT, which is in progress, and then memorializing the closeout, um, requirements within section 18.9.7, as well as providing the as-built. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Ms. Burnett?
I'm gonna need to recuse myself. I'm related to the engineer.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's all right. Mr. Chairman, um, given that this is a, a veterinary clinic, but more importantly, the boarding-
Ms. Chairman, given that this is a veterinary clinic, but more importantly, the boarding part of this, has there been any research done on noise, given the residential parts of the adjoining properties?
No, sir, not that I'm aware of.
I mean, dogs, dogs generally in a kennel-type situation do tend to bark a lot. I don't, I don't know that it makes any difference, but perhaps we ought to be sure that the neighbors at least know what's coming.
Absolutely.
That'd be a good question for the applicant when they come, came up. I'll tell you that when I reviewed the staff report, I asked myself the same question, and I looked at the site plan, and I looked at their plan and the size of the fenced yards that they're proposing for where these dogs would run, and just the way that the business is set up, it does not appear that there would be a large quantity of dogs outside at any given time. But you could, for instance, put something on the site plan that there will not be dogs outside, boarded, or kept outside any time between these hours, for instance, if you wanted to.
Well, and even where, in the boarding areas, there's oftentimes a fair amount of noise, having had dogs and had to have them boarded from time to time. But, you're right, the developers may have a good answer for this.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Alright. Let me pull this up. Vince Lacoste?
Hello, Vince Lacoste, Bethel Engineering, thirty-two thirty-three, Executive Park Circle in Mobile. This is Jeff Jordan. He's the architect with Forest Daniel and Associates. To answer the question about, about the dog, I'm probably gonna have to pass that to Jeff, but, you know, we did know that there's not developed, you know, residential homes around this currently. Now, there certainly could be, you know, if subdivisions are approved, and perhaps that would be something that engineer could take into account, you know, as they're, you know, placing the common areas and things like that. But, at this time, you know, there was really nothing there for us to plan around, in terms of existing residences. As far as, you know, the kennel area inside the building, you know, I would, I guess, have to pass that to Jeff if he has any response to that.
Okay.
I'm Jeff Jordan with Forest Daniel Associates Architects, eight zero zero seven American Way in Daphne. Like Vince said, we've got a lot of pasture land around us, so right now when you go out there, it's just a big green field. The boarding facility is something that's much needed in Daphne. We know as landowners there, there's just not places that you can take your pets to right now. The building that's labeled as boarding facility has indoor kennels. They're gonna have a series of glass enclosures by, made by a company called Midmark. So, the pets would spend most of their time indoors, and when they go out, they have a fenced-in area right adjacent to the building that is a decent distance away from a property line. And then, in addition to that, we have a lot of landscape screening that we've taken all along the eastern property line. It was designed by a local landscape architect, Kent Broome. So, we feel like with the, with the distance we have there, the fencing, the landscape barrier, that we're in about as good a shape with that as we could be.
Okay.
I'm assuming that, once they get the kennels built, there will be a yappy hour?
The more yappy, the better.
I have one question. This is only for small, small animals, not large. We're not looking at any cows or horses or anything here, just cats and dogs?
That is correct. There is not a large animal portion to this at this time. Just so you know, this property owner does own additional acreage to the north. This particular landowner is a horse-tooth doctor. He travels all over the southeast because you have to go to them. He's ready to get off the road, and that's why he's building this facility.
Any reason there's a, what I think is a tremendous amount of parking for a vet clinic and kennel?
You know, I tried to talk the landowner out of that. You see that first bay of parking closest to one eighty-one is an alternate area. He's only gonna build that first, or the, excuse me, the outermost bay if the dollars work out. We've already bid it. I think he's making a decision on that. He wanted the right to build it, but he may or may not build that outboard parking. But, I tried to talk him out of it, and for whatever reason, I think he just feels like he's gonna be crowded.
Yeah, I just, eighty-three spaces, when thirty-four are only required, feels like, you know, overabundance to me, and I, you know, being in the business, I, I just, I struggle to over-recommend parking.
Yeah, I agree.
Probably the same perspective as you have on this.
I'd rather spend it on the building than additional parking.
So, it's a environmental question, but where does the runoff, when they wash all this, these kennels out? Or does that go into a septic sewer? Doesn't just go out in the yard?
Well, the indoor facility, you have two distinct sewer lines. You have one sewer line that, I would call it a line that has pet hair, and then all of that sewer line drains into a, an interceptor where you can collect that, and that hair and everything is intercepted before it goes into the sanitary sewer line.
Okay, so it's been addressed?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And that's all I have. Signed up. So, we'll close the public hearing. Any other questions? Ms. Rose, you have anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, any other, no other questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion for approval with the condition.
Mr. Tonsmaire has made a motion to approve.
Seconded.
Mr. Seibert, second the motion. Any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Mr. King, is this item a public hearing? Did we cover this at the last one?
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman. I'll pause to give you the opportunity to make a disclosure statement.
No, I'm asking you, is this a public hearing?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Alright. Then we'll open the public hearing for case number CSP twenty-two dash four zero, and the PUD twenty-two dash four, Sugar Sands RV Park. Does anybody need to clear any prior communication on this item? Okay.
And thank you, Ms. Chairman. What we're doing here, for the sake of time and efficiency, is asking the planning commission to consider the commission site plan and the PUD at the same time for Sugar Sands RV Park. Commissioners, planning commissioners, this is a case you've seen before, but it's been many months since you've seen it. I'll try to be, I'll try to present this quickly, out of respect for your time, but certainly, you can, you may have several questions on it because of the time it's been since you've seen the case. And so, what we're here to, what we're here to consider is an eighty-one unit recreational vehicle park. This is an existing park that requires some modifications and amendments to bring it into conformance with both the planned unit development requirements and the commission site plan requirements of the subdivision regulations and the zoning ordinance respectively. I'll add to this screen right here also, that we're going to memorialize in this approval, we're asking that you memorialize in this approval. There is a previous subdivision variance that you see on screen, as well as a zoning variance approved by Board of Adjustment Number Two. And so, first of all, first of all, planning commissioners, this actually triggers both rulebooks that we use at the county, so that's why you see the two case numbers up there on screen. What I'll mention here very briefly here, commissioners, this is Zoned RV One. This is the correct zoning for this use type. You'll see that this is actually a use that is allowed by right in this zoning district. However, the technical requirements of Article thirteen of the zoning ordinance automatically triggers a commission site plan. So, commissioners, we'll go through this very quickly here. Utilities and fire protection has been checked as adequate, as is drainage, as is the zoning ordinance, and the local provisions of this planning district. ALDOT is not applicable because there is not an ALDOT road affected by this site. The parking on site has been checked, it has been checked. We do not have an ATM in MPDES on this because the improvements that are needed do not disturb enough, do not disturb enough ground to trigger that requirement. The landscape buffers we will show you are acquired, are adequate. We do not have any issues with Corps of Engineers because there is no wetland filling on this site. We did not require any turnout permit and waste handling, Mr. Chairman. I will show that to you in just a moment.
Thanks, sir.
Where, of course, we show you our county map to verify that this site is zoned in Planning District thirty, as you see right there. Showing you here just the proximity, and so what we did here is using the orange to represent Orange Beach city limits, and the blue to represent Gulf Shores, that we are very close to both cities. And here is your zoning map, and again, as we talked about, this property is Zoned RV One. We'll show both of your maps side by side. At the bottom of the page there, you see that you have both a combination of vacant property and single-family residential property around subject site. And we have an aerial image that we can certainly return to if necessary. And then, subject property, as you see here, property to the south, property to the north, property across the street. Okay, on your basic property data, a couple things that I will point out here, planning commissioners, that we already have the adequate, they already have the adequate travel lane distance on Roscoe Road. As we mentioned, this is RV One zoning in Planning District thirty. This does not, there are no local provisions in Planning District thirty that appear to affect this site. Make it very clear that this is, this, this approval that you're possibly going to issue tonight is for already eighty-one RV spaces. The site as-built had sixty-three RV spaces, and we were notified by another local government agency of possible additions to this site above and beyond what was originally approved. You see the NOV, Notice of Violation Number there on screen in yellow. We'll get, we'll, we'll talk about this in just a moment when we get to the approval recommendation, because there is a, there's a necessity to terminate a subdivision on this site. I'll describe that in greater detail in just a moment. And then, as we mentioned earlier, the, you see the approval dates of both a subdivision variance and a zoning variance that occurred last year. In terms of wetlands, we'll describe, I'll just reiterate briefly, there are some encroachments that this site will deal with and encounter that were approved through those two variances. Our utility letters, and also, Mr. Lee gave us an engineer, gave us a PE stamped letter, basically explaining it's an existing site, and even with the added sites, the utilities and infrastructure is adequate. Procedurally, we give the city of Gulf Shores the opportunity to comment on commission site plans. They did not have any comments. On your left, commissioners, this is the actual zoning requirements of RV One. On the right, that I've marked there in yellow, those are the local provisions for Planning District thirty, which do not appear to affect this site. In terms of drainage, there are some slight alterations to the existing drainage system that are required. Mr. Lee is the professional engineer of record for this work. His drainage narrative, as you see here, is on site, and as I've marked in yellow, I want to thank, thank Tyler with the Baldwin County Highway Department for doing the drainage review, which he found to be adequate. Now, what you have on screen here, commissioners, as I told you earlier, I was gonna explain the subdivision side of this. So, the original development was, they went through a rezoning process, but then they actually went through a subdivision process and actually physically subdivided the property. So, each RV space is a lot of record. The current owner owns all of those lots of record, as well as all of the common areas and all of the infrastructure. So, as it originally was prepared, the intent was to sell those lots. In its current form, the property owner has common ownership of the whole site. What a prior developer did to the site was, in the areas you see in light red, installed additional RV spaces without going through the approval process. So, what we hear today is to push across the finish line how this site will be fixed and brought into conformity. And so, again, as we mentioned here, and so, we're gonna zoom in, and what I'm showing here is, this is just one example of a common area, and so, what you see in the zoom in is the actual, an excerpt of the plat. So, additional RV spaces were added to that common area. What this approval would do, if it's pleasure of the commission to approve it, is make those RV spaces. So, these are the up-to-date civil plans for the site. Ms. Chairman, I'm gonna zoom in on this area and show you the waste handling area, and we'll describe what they have to do, what they have now, as well as what they have to do as a condition of approval to fully enclose the waste dumpsters. They're partially enclosed now. Okay, commissioners, I zoomed in on this particular note, on this drawing right here, and just to reemphasize that this is zoned, so therefore, the yellow note there, no recreational vehicle may be used as dwelling, and that occupancy extending beyond four months in any twentieth-month period shall be considered permanent occupancy. That's required because this area is zoned. For that reason, commissioners, I did not send this to the school board, as well as the fact that it's an existing site. Had this been in an unzoned area, procedurally would have, we would have certainly have sent this to the school board, and quite frankly, going forward, we'll send all of these to the school board, because some of them may be a quasi-residence. In terms of this right here, just going through the civil plans, landscaping, commissioners, so what we have for you here, it's a little difficult to see here, this was not in your packet, we added this today. The overstory trees are in green, the understory trees are in yellow, the shrubbery is in red. Zoomed out, it's very difficult for you to see that. Here is the actual planning schedule. We'll zoom in here, and so, again, green for overstory trees, yellow for understory trees, red for shrubs. For example, we have a Tonto Creek Myrtle as one of your understory trees. We have a Teddy Bear Southern Magnolia as one of your understory trees. We have a Bald Cypress as one of your overstory trees, and then we also have a Cabbage Palm Meadow as one of your overstory trees. Commissioners, we won't delve too deep into this unless there are questions, unless there are, unless there are specific questions. But from last time, we provided the, provided the wetland delineation, as you see here, that was done by Wetland Sciences. And so, what you have, the situation, is where some of those RV lots actually encroach into the wetland buffers. And so, that was addressed by both of the variances we talked about earlier. But just to refresh everyone's memory on this color-coded drawing right here, the color-coded drawing here helps you break down the wetland buffers, the actual wetland areas, and then where the encroachment occurs. So, what the variances did for this site, and I'm gonna zoom in on this area as an example. So, for example, we have our thirty-foot wetland setback, we have our jurisdictional wetlands here in green. We have our fifteen-foot buffer required by the subdivision regulations. The balance of that is also a buffer required by the zoning ordinance, as well as your thirty-foot building setback. The blue area are examples of the encroachments. Those encroachments are allowed to exist by the two variances you see on screen. Part of those variance approvals was restoring the wetlands, and the restoration plan is what you see here on screen, prepared by Wetland Sciences. Chairman, commissioners, just showed you here, this is the waste disposal area in its current configuration. We'll have a condition of approval that will require, that will memorialize that they're showing this being fully enclosed. And here, just an aerial image, just showing where, giving a better detail on where that is located in relation to Burkowski Lane. Chairman, commissioners, items one through seven are your standard conditions of approval, so I won't elaborate those unless there are questions. Items eight through ten are unique to the site. Because of the uniqueness of this application, it requires a few conditions of approval, just simply to memorialize what's happened. And so, to briefly summarize, again, as we talked about, first of all, that we're asking for a dual approval for both the planned unit development in terms of subdivision regulations, as well as the commission site plan in terms of the zoning ordinance. Also, item nine, I alluded to earlier, to make all of this work, the subdivision in place that will have to be terminated. So, we're putting a condition of approval that they will go through a subdivision termination process. There's a couple of ways to do that that will be satisfactory to the revenue commission, that will bring it back to a single-parent parcel. Then, this puts a PUD and a CSP on top of that, where it operates as a more traditional RV park with multiple spaces on one piece of property. Item ten is memorializing the variances. We talked about ad nauseam. As an abundance of caution, we're memorializing, there are several concrete pads throughout the south, throughout the site. We're just, that was a question on one of the earlier, on one of the earlier applications. We're memorializing that those are not RV spaces. The only RV spaces are what's shown on this site plan. The waste disposal area that we showed earlier, it shows on the civil drawings, fully enclosing that. We're memorializing that that is a requirement. We'll verify that that is complete prior to the closeout when we get as-built drawings. We take the as-built drawings, and of course, compare them to the site. This does require recording a PUD site plan with the Judge of Probate's Office, like any other PUD site plan. We procedurally typically memorialize that requirement. And then finally, Chairman, commissioners, item fourteen, we're memorializing here that successful submission of the as-built drawings and carrying out the closeout process of eighteen point nine point seven of the zoning ordinance, that will cure the Notice of Violation, the number you see there on screen. And once that's done, we cure the Notice of Violation, which started this process because of the additional sites added to the, added to the development. I know that's a lot, Chairman, commissioners, so I am very happy to answer questions.
Okay. Questions for staff? Ms. Burnett?
I have.
I have two questions. One about the variance. When was the variance approved, and what was it?
Okay, Ms. Burnett, and let me apologize for not explaining that in great detail, respecting this Commission's time, but I'll go back here. And so, and forgive me, I'll just read it right off the screen here. So, subdivision variance 22-12 was approved September 1st of last year. And then, zoning variance 22-80 was approved on November 10th of last year.
But the variance, was it for the number of spaces? What was the variance?
So, the two variances, so the situation actually triggered a, you had a situation where you had basically a deficiency with both the subdivision regulations and the zoning ordinance. So, just to describe that again a little bit better. You have RV spaces that are encroaching into the wetland buffers.
Okay.
Okay.
Got that.
So, in lieu, and so, in, lack of a better term, in exchange for allowing that encroachment to continue and to function, all wetlands, both jurisdictional and non-jurisdictional, are going to be restored on this site as prescribed by the Wetland Scientist.
So, just clarification, if the Planning Commission agrees to terminate this subdivision, does it terminate that variance as well?
So, Ms. Burnett, and you weren't here for that, so, you weren't here for that, so I'll try to explain that a little bit better. As you can tell, there are several things going on here at the same time.
Yes.
So, you have, one issue is that, one issue is that you had, you had 63 actual lots of record that happened to be on RV1 zoning and were used as RV spaces, though each one was a lot. So, additional RV spaces were added into common areas without going through any kind of approval process by a prior developer. The current developer has to fix this problem. And so, so therefore, the solution that staff came up with is to terminate the subdivision entirely.
Yep.
Bring it back to a single parcel, then get a more typical planned unit development in the subdivision regulations and Commission site plan in the zoning ordinance to make it a more typical RV park, where you have multiple RV spaces on one piece of property.
It's a legal question. Then probably what I'm asking, usually, variances run with the land. And so, when we terminate, if the Planning Commission terminates the subdivision, does that eliminate the variance, or does it still run with the land?
I would really have to read the, was that the Board of Adjustment? Was that us that did that?
Well, actually, one of each. We had one of each.
I would have to read it, because not all variances run with the land.
I didn't think so.
Many from the Board of Adjustment do not.
Okay.
But let me clarify on this one. These variances were requested in preparation for this case that we're hearing today. So they are baked into the site in preparation to get us to this closure that you were hearing today.
I'm just worried about title search later. That's all. And making sure that it has clear title later. My other question is, and if you don't mind, just check that out. You know, I don't know, you know, it's just administrative, probably, you know, at a later date, once this Planning Commission does whatever they're going to do. The other thing is about the note, number 5. It says, "No recreational vehicle shall be used as a dwelling", and that occupancy extending beyond four months in any 12-month period shall be considered permanent occupancy. I would prefer that to say is prohibited, shall be prohibited.
And Commissioners, I'll leave that up to, I'll leave that up to the Commission. I will say that that wording is right out of the zoning ordinance.
Well, your definition in your zoning ordinance for recreation of vehicles is temporary. Period. That's what it says.
That's correct.
So, anyway, just.
I do tend to agree. I actually thought the same thing when we went through the presentation.
I like it, yes.
That as stated here, without the context of the rest of the zoning ordinance, this is almost a confusing note. Because in the zoning ordinance, it's couched with the clarification that you cannot permanently occupy an RV park. So I agree, I think it's a good idea to change that recommendation to say permanent occupancy is not permitted.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to kind of reassure Ms. Burnett, because I think these are fantastic questions. In the process of going through both variances, I think we had about as many conditions of approval on those as we have today. So I think we captured, and Beaufort King's, one of Beaufort King's favorite phrases is memorialize. I think we memorialized as best as a non-attorney can write that the intent of both of those variances was a function of this overall site, like Matthew was speaking of, and we made it very clear that the intention all along was to terminate the subdivision by the property owner. So that action will be done by the property owner, not by this Commission, and that that intent all along was to return it to a single parcel, and then apply the PUD and a CSP on top of it.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Just one quick question. At the beginning of your description of all of this, you mentioned that all of these recreational vehicle parking spaces were individual parcels that have a common owner. Is, does this mean that at some point before this transition took place to removing the subdivision, that the current common owner could sell those as individual properties?
Mr. Chairman, certainly, you know, the property owner has common ownership, and it's his property. He could certainly do that. That would probably be unwise. That would probably be unwise, because then you would completely disrupt this entire process we've been working on for about a calendar year.
Well, I think what Mr. Brewer is asking is, prior to all this happening, yes, this person who owned all these lots, as one person could have sold them if he had wanted to.
And still could, still please, if he so chose, I'm not.
I'm not trying to debate whether it's the right thing to do or not. Is, would it be legal for him or her to do that under the circumstances, as individual parcels of property?
Absolutely, but then he would not be able to go forward with anything that he's proposed here.
Right, he would no longer be able to comply with these conditions of approval.
And then, you know, I don't think he could sell a couple lots and get a PUD. He has to do either, so here, he's asking for a PUD so that he's never going to be able to sell any lots once he establishes it as a PUD.
Okay. Bosch?
Who, does the county maintain Burkowski Lane? Is that a publicly-platted right-of-way?
And, great question, Mr. Bosch, and give me just a second here. Let me get this image back on here. So, and Tyler Mitchell can back me up here if I'm mistaken, but you'll notice Roscoe Road by the crosshatching, by the dashing showing on there, that one is clearly a county-maintained road. Since this Burkowski just has a center line and doesn't have any kind of dashing, my level of understanding that is not currently county-maintained, and Tyler can correct me if I am mistaken.
No, I think Beaufort's correct there, that we do not maintain Burkowski Lane.
And Chairman Commissioners, typically, if that was a county-maintained road that was still a dirt road, it would be a brown and black alternating, alternating design on the center line. And you see the paved road, Roscoe Road, being black and white, shows you a county-maintained paved road.
Yeah, I was curious whether this causes any issues in the future if there's access required, I sound like the chairman here, to a waste disposal location that's not publicly accessible.
So that may be, I'm going to go under the assumption that it's a public right-of-way, it's just not currently a maintained public right-of-way. Tyler's nodding his head, yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? I hadn't called on the applicant, Chris, or you, or Mr. Willis want to speak?
Good evening, I'm Chris. I turned it off, there we go. I'm Chris Lee with Lee Engineering Company, 1290 Main Street in Daphne. Mr. Beaufort, Mr. Beaufort King did a wonderful presentation of.
It's off. There you go.
He did a wonderful presentation of everything we've gone through for the past almost 18 months now, so I appreciate his help on this, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have, as well as Bryce here.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Is it, I do.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Burnett.
Is it possible to reword note 5, number 5?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Normally, I'm concerned about the proliferation of RV parks in Baldwin County. I will say, I think this is in a proper location, on the way to the beach, where RV parks are, should be the most profitable and the most functional. So I appreciate the fact that you all are doing this in an area, personally, that adds to the county, doesn't necessarily detract from the other development going on in the county.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, guys. Okay. Mr. King, you have anything else to add?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I think I've said enough today.
All right, I have no one else signed up to speak. I'm going to close the public hearing. This time, we'll entertain a motion.
Move we approve with the conditions that the staff has recommended, both general and specific.
Do we want to include Ms. Burnett's comment about the note?
Certainly, certainly, I would accept that.
Okay. All right. Mr. Brewer's made a motion to approve.
I second it.
And this is for both cases, right? You did, okay. All right. Mr. Mulley made a second of the motion. Are there any questions, comments on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And then, I don't want to lose sight of, Mr. Strager had an item that we said we'd come back to at the end of the meeting. All of you got a copy, have a copy of this. Jamie, the bold print is what you're adding, what you were suggesting be added?
Actually, the whole ordinance, starting with A, B, C, including A, B, and C, but B is the one that I was really trying to emphasize.
Okay.
I passed this by Jason Paget and Robert Davis, who are normally on this board, and Mr. Paget hadn't gotten back to me, but Mr. Davis came back to me. He said he concurred, and he agreed with making everything consistent, dealing with utilities, but he recommended we add a definition for current. I think it's in the third sentence? When they're talking about the current number of customers, the current capacity, define what that current means, and that would resolve some of the problems that we've had recently. So I'm recommending a text amendment so that this is consistent with all the subdivision regulations.
Is this a case like the zoning ordinance, where we need to initiate y'all to start the process and then present us everything fully?
That's correct. So this, we're not actually approving this text today. It's basically seeing if this is something y'all are going to send us off to pursue.
Okay.
I do have a question. I'm not sure if you can ask the number of customers. I don't know why. I'm not sure about that. I think, I know you can ask about capacity and availability to service additional customers, but I don't know. It just changes so much, you know, daily, that I don't know if you can ask that and really get a reliable answer. That's all.
That's what this process will be for, for us to kind of go through that and say, is some of this reasonable? Are we going to have a headache trying to get some of this? And then we'll pitch some final texts to y'all. That's great feedback.
I think another point, too, in light of our conversation around Southman Village, is that should we explore noting on plats where these wellheads are, and if this comes up as a future issue? I mean, I know, you know, David said it should have been called to the Phase 1, but, you know, clearly it wasn't. You know, is this a problem that could come up again in the future?
It should have been found at the title search, so I don't know why it wasn't. Aren't those typically found?
I don't know. I'm not sure I've ever seen one where, I've seen a case where it would be. But I, yeah, I've seen, you know, Phase 1s with it, but I've never, I've never looked at a title close enough to know that.
How far back does title search go?
We require 30-year, a 30-year look back.
And how old was that well?
93.
It was a little over 30. So there's, that's a possibility, that's the reason it may not have shown up.
Yeah.
And do they, another question, I'm sorry, I don't mean to delay our meeting, but because they were never active, is that why they didn't show up, maybe?
So, we're really having this, it'd be a lot of speculation for me here. The great thing is, we could easily check a map on this if it was part of the subdivision regulations.
Yeah.
I think the one thing I would caution about, though, is there are hundreds of these in Baldwin County, and it's, I'm not sure it's ever come up before, which means there are subdivisions planted all over these. I do want to make sure we don't create something that's not a real issue, create an issue out of something that's not a real issue. But that's part of, if y'all ask us to look at this, that's part of what we'll look at. We'll meet with the regulatory folks over this. We'll say, how big of a deal is this? And then, that allows us to report back to you. So I think it's a good idea. I just kind of want to clarify that we'll make sure it's not something that's going to be a headache down the road.
Yeah, do that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think a title search would necessarily show that unless it had actually been placed in the chain of title at some time. And when they did the exploration well, well, I mean, and then it capped it and nothing showed, that probably never made it onto any chain of title, because it never was operating well, is what I'm thinking of, from just looking at mineral rights deeds and stuff like that. So, I don't really know if anyone dropped the ball in this case, in my opinion, with regards to the well that looks like it was explored for less than a couple months and then capped the same year.
So can we request that if there's a well that's discovered in the future, moving forward, that we do some type of procedural, or, I don't know if it needs to be a text amendment, requiring the 25 feet setback from wherever the well is?
So that would need to be a text amendment? And so I think what would be a good idea is, with this motion, ask us to consider the language regarding the utilities, and also whether or not we need to add language regarding the wellhead. And then when we present this, we'll kind of say, here's what we came up with.
That's good.
Okay, and I have a third issue. This has come up on a lot of our meetings. We reach out to the school board, the school board does not reach out to us. Is there, maybe could we ask the city planner or somebody else to at least acknowledge, hey, we did receive your email. We know there's 183 new lots going in here, and we're saying that's not a problem.
And I do think that on the instances where they have come to voice, or they have provided, those have been on the rezoning cases that we have, because on the subdivision cases, I mean, while we would like to know, I think it would be interesting to know if they meet the formal requirements, those houses will probably go in, because we'll have to grant the subdivision request under our subdivision regulations. And so, I think that, you know, probably, I don't want to speak for them, though, coming to the meeting to object or say we don't have enough people doesn't give us a basis under the subdivision regulations for denying the subdivision request if it was, you know, it met our.
Piggybacking on that just a little bit. You know, once again, at tonight's meeting, we have bumped up against no response from the school system. I don't know how everyone else feels, but I thought that our joint work session with the County Commission was very helpful, and we hope that it was to them as well. Is it possible that we could ask the County School Board? Because clearly, we're not getting a message through to the administrators. So perhaps, if we could have that kind of a joint work session with the County School Board, that might be enlightening and advance the ball on this.
I think that's potentially a very good idea. What I would want to correct on, kind of on the record, is I think we are getting through to the administrators. of on the record, is I think we are getting through to the administrators, I think they're, they have a pretty good, they have, they have the best data of anybody in this county in terms of how growth and growth patterns, because they have to provide these schools, so they have a pretty high level of confidence in terms of what their capabilities are, and what they're going to be two years from now, and so what might be a better approach is for, ask one of them to come here and talk to y'all, and say, yes, we do get your emails, and I'm sorry, we don't necessarily always respond, but here's, here's why, and I think they're going to say, it's because we do have a high level of confidence that we can handle these, but maybe that would be a good first step.
I have placed a call to the superintendent, he did not return my call. Maybe he didn't like me, I don't know.
No.
Well, Sackler Field, maybe, we had a little, aside the point, all right, we do have an item on the floor we need to take action on, so entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we ask staff to look at the text amendments as presented, and also, there was something else, what was the other?
The, the well?
Gas well.
The well.
That's right.
Research the well issue.
Okay. Ms. Burnett's made the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Well, I heard, I'll give it to Mr. Strager down there. Okay. Any comments, questions about the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Any public comments? They all got tired, went home. Staff reports?
The only, the only thing I'd like to say, real quickly, is we do have another zoning election on Tuesday, that's for proposed planning District 39, kind of East Barnwell. Planning District 38 did fail, of course, that was December, so y'all have already heard that, that was kind of West Barnwell. We also, this week, received the nearly 500 signatures required for planning District 14, which is kind of south of Silver Hill, I actually wasn't sure if they were going to get to all the signatures, so that does look like, they're in the verification process, but it looks like that area will probably have a zoning referendum in the next 120 days or so as well. That's all that I have.
Okay. Legal counsel?
I don't have anything to report.
Okay.
I do have one more question, and this is just to get direction, earlier, we had a lot of opposition, and we had an engineer here, later, and they did not speak, they didn't talk, they didn't work anything out, but then we saw Mr. Alice and the Dixons actually talking about their drainage problem, and, you know, and the gravel road, or whatever that they were talking about, and they worked their problems out, would it be okay for the commission, the board, to ask one of the representatives to meet with the engineer, table an item to resolve something, and come back next month on the, an issue that they were all very, very concerned about with the drainage? Can we ask that, or is that stepping over the line?
So if you would need to, there would need to be a lack of certainty on a specific technical requirement of the subdivision regulations, about whether or not those have been met. Now, now, what was interesting about the Lilian case, it was a zoning case, so that one you prob, that, you could have tabled that, it was a PRD, which we don't see a lot of those, but you could have said, hey, listen, we don't feel comfortable with this, would you all be willing to meet with the citizens and table it, and see if y'all can come up to some type of agreement on a zoning-type matter?
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Well, our next meeting is, I believe, March the 2nd, I'm sorry, I turned the page, March 2nd. Nothing else? We adjourned. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.